Good evening. I think my mic is working. It's working. All right. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Councilmember Dybala.
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Present.
Councilmember Weselak.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. Apologies for us getting started a little late. The council met today in an administrative function session at 6:30 PM today. And we met regarding evaluation of outside legal firms to perform an independent audit related to the events giving rise to the litigation known as Cooper versus the City of Tacoma Park. Administrative function sessions are closed to the public. In terms of the agenda today, there are no changes. We will start with a proclamation of National Public Works Week, which is May the 18th through the 24th, 2025. We will then have a couple of presentations this evening. A presentation of performance measurement design project, a draft report. And we will also have a presentation on rent stabilization by Dr. Christina Stacy of the Urban Institute. We will then have two work sessions. The first ordinance amending Title VI Housing regarding the issuance of rental licenses. And the second is a continuation of the council discussion on legislative action requests to be submitted to the Maryland Municipal League. In terms of upcoming agendas, as a reminder, Monday, May the 26th is Memorial Day. City offices and facilities will be closed Sunday and Monday for the Memorial Day holiday. On Wednesday, April, I'm sorry, in a whole different month, May the 28th, the city council will meet at its regular time of 7:30 in the auditorium. We will have two voting items. The first is a resolution authorizing legislative action requests to be submitted to the Maryland Municipal League. And the second is a first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code Chapter 6.08, rental housing licenses and owner occupied group house registrations. We will then have two work sessions. The first is an update on the reimagining public safety task force recommendations. The second is review of Resolution 2017-45, identifying goals and priorities for the police department. On Wednesday, June the 4th, the city council will meet at its regular time of 7:30 PM. And we will have a proclamation of National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June the 6th. We will also have a voting session, a second reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code Chapter 6.08, rental housing licenses and owner occupied group house registrations. And then we will have a series of work sessions. The first is FY26 Budget Amendment Number Four. The second is renewal of service and equipment contracts with Axon, a rent stabilization policy review scope of work, and then submission of the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, or NED, grant application. And so with that, we are going to move to our proclamation for this evening. Recognizing National Public Works Week. Recognizing National Public Works Week, May 18th through the 24th, 2025. Whereas public works professionals focus on services, facilities, and infrastructure that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of Tacoma Park residents. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs. In Tacoma Park, these include solid waste collection, recycling, street and right-of-way maintenance, storm water management, playground safety, leaf collection, protection of the urban tree canopy, maintenance of city gardens, facility maintenance and repair of city equipment, and sustainability efforts in design procurement and outreach. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these programs, as well as their planning, design, and implementation, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the qualified and dedicated Public Works Department staff. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas this week provides an annual opportunity to recognize our Public Works employees. Now therefore I, Talisha Circe, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, hereby proclaim May 18th through 24th, 2025, as Public Works Week in the City of Tacoma Park. And on behalf of the city council, residents, and staff, thank all Public Works Department employees for their dedicated service to the city and its residents. And I urge Tacoma Park residents and community organizations to acquaint themselves with the services provided by our Public Works Department and recognize the contributions each Public Works employee makes every day to the environment and to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life in our city. Now, we're going to move to public comments. We do not have any voting items this evening, so we're going to move to general public comments. Any general public comments this evening? Okay. See you none? Come on down, people. We have a lot of presentations today.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunas, and I am here to speak about a different topic tonight. The Blood Drive that we are having on Saturday. It will be right in the Azalea Room. I have good news and bad news about that. And the good news and bad news is that all of the appointment slots are filled as of right now. However, we are working with Inova to try to expand the number of appointments, to see if we can do that. And also, sometimes people drop out if they get sick or whatever. So please do, if you would like to donate and you were not able to get an appointment slot, email me at tacoma park blood drive, all one word, at gmail dot com, and I will work with you to try to get you in there with Inova. We will have awards. I mean, Inova will take very good care of you medically. They do a fabulous job. They're very well organized. And we have special Tacoma Park t-shirts, either in gold or blue. We're almost out of the medium-sized ones, but we do have some large and extra-large ones. And also, Inova will be bringing some t-shirts. I don't think the camera can show it very well, but we have these flyers, and it's Heroes Helping Heroes t-shirts that they have, I guess for Memorial Day, but that's for the month of May. And they will also have snacks, and they take very, very good care of people. So I really would like to encourage people to do that. We do it a couple times a year, and it's always been very successful. I want to thank the police department for the outreach that they've done, and also the city manager and some of the council members I know have done outreach, and that's a measure of success. We have never filled up all our appointments before, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments this evening?
I'm Saul Schneiderman, 306 Lincoln Avenue. Want to thank the mayor and council for recognizing public workers and Public Works Department, our city Public Works Department. I'm a longtime member of ASME, which is the same union that represents our sanitation workers and our Public Works staff here. This is the union that was involved in the 1968 Memphis sanitation strike, which was all over the news, and has a worldwide recognition of sanitation workers. Every time I haul my trash out to the street, I interact with our sanitation workers. And the first thing I say to them is, "How's the city treating you?" And they always reply, "Thanks for asking. I can't complain." So, good for us, and thank you for recognizing the Public Works staff here in the City of Tacoma.
Thank you very much. Okay, Arthur. I think the floor is yours.
Arthur David Olson, Ward 4, Herbie Hancock Avenue, and I am still not a lawyer. Tonight, the council held a fourth secret session on sexual harassment and subsequent events. There have been public readouts for the first two secret sessions. Maryland law requires readouts to include a listing of the topics of discussion, persons present, and each action taken during the session. No actions have been mentioned in either of the two readouts. This is in line with the sense I expressed two weeks ago that there is little for the council to do in this matter. According to the agenda for tonight, tonight's secret session was an administrative function session. Per Maryland law, administrative function means the administration of a law of the state, a law of a political subdivision of the state, or a rule, regulation, or bylaw of a public body. That's it. In the interest of transparency and openness, I hope the council will let the public know what laws, rules, regulations, and bylaws were being administered tonight and two weeks ago. And according to the agenda, tonight's secret session was, quote, "regarding evaluation of an outside legal firm to perform an independent audit." I can think of no good reason why this evaluation needs to be done in secret. I hope the council can provide one. Finally, my understanding is that while the Maryland Open Meetings Act allows secret sessions in some cases, it never requires secret sessions. I hope that going forward, in the matter at hand and in other matters, the council will conduct all business in open sessions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other general public comments?
Tom Gagliardo, I live in the City of Tacoma Park. All of you represent all of us. To follow up on my good friend and neighbor's comments, I've sent you a written comment on this. The Maryland Attorney General advises that the Open Meetings Act reflects a balance between, that the General Assembly has struck, between the public's need to know about the conduct of public business and the government's need, in special and appropriate circumstances, to address certain types of matters behind closed doors. In case of doubt, the balance tilts towards openness. The first question, when considering whether or not to close a meeting should be, is there any harm if we meet publicly? Contrary to the Attorney General's advice, it appears the first question all seven of you ask is, can we close the meeting? I'm hard pressed to think what harm would result from publicly discussing and receiving feedback about the selection of someone to conduct the audit. Now, you don't need an audit to do several things. So the question is, when? When will you tell us who approved the million-dollar settlement on behalf of the city? When will you tell us why the settlement for that amount was in the best interest of the city? When will you tell us why Mr. Black remained employed for two years? When will you tell us the criteria you adopted to evaluate firms seeking to do the audit? And when will you tell us which firms you have been or are now considering to do the audit? Stop hiding.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
Good evening. I think my mic is working. It's working. All right. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Councilmember Dybala.
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Weselak.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. Apologies for us getting started a little late. The council met today in an administrative function session at 6:30 PM today. And we met regarding evaluation of outside legal firms to perform an independent audit related to the events giving rise to the litigation known as Cooper versus the City of Tacoma Park. Administrative function sessions are closed to the public. In terms of the agenda today, there are no changes. We will start with a proclamation of National Public Works Week, which is May the 18th through the 24th, 2025. We will then have a couple of presentations this evening. A presentation of performance measurement design project, a draft report. And we will also have a presentation on rent stabilization by Dr. Christina Stacy of the Urban Institute. We will then have two work sessions. The first ordinance amending Title VI Housing regarding the issuance of rental licenses and owner occupied group house registrations. And then we will have a series of work sessions. The first is FY26 Budget Amendment Number Four. The second is renewal of service and equipment contracts with Axon, a rent stabilization policy review scope of work, and then submission of the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, or NED, grant application. And so with that, we are going to move to our proclamation for this evening. Recognizing National Public Works Week. Recognizing National Public Works Week, May 18th through the 24th, 2025. Whereas public works professionals focus on services, facilities, and infrastructure that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of Tacoma Park residents. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs. In Tacoma Park, these include solid waste collection, recycling, street and right-of-way maintenance, storm water management, playground safety, leaf collection, protection of the urban tree canopy, maintenance of city gardens, facility maintenance and repair of city equipment, and sustainability efforts in design, procurement, and outreach. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these programs, as well as their planning, design, and implementation, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the qualified and dedicated Public Works Department staff. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas this week provides an annual opportunity to recognize our Public Works employees. Now therefore I, Talisha Circe, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, hereby proclaim May 18th through 24th, 2025, as Public Works Week in the City of Tacoma Park. And on behalf of the city council, residents, and staff, thank all Public Works Department employees for their dedicated service to the city and its residents. And I urge Tacoma Park residents and community organizations to acquaint themselves with the services provided by our Public Works Department and recognize the contributions each Public Works employee makes every day to the environment and to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life in our city. Now, we're going to move to public comments. We do not have any voting items this evening, so we're going to move to general public comments. Any general public comments this evening? Okay. See you none? Come on down, people. We have a lot of presentations today.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunas, and I am here to speak about a different topic tonight. The Blood Drive that we are having on Saturday. It will be right in the Azalea Room. I have good news and bad news about that. And the good news and bad news is that all of the appointment slots are filled as of right now. However, we are working with Inova to try to expand the number of appointments, to see if we can do that. And also, sometimes people drop out if they get sick or whatever. So, please do, if you would like to donate and you were not able to get an appointment slot, email me at tacoma park blood drive, all one word, at gmail dot com, and I will work with you to try to get you in there with Inova. We will have awards. I mean, Inova will take very good care of you medically. They do a fabulous job. They're very well organized. And we have special Tacoma Park t-shirts, either in gold or blue. We're almost out of the medium-sized ones, but we do have some large and extra-large ones. And also, Inova will be bringing some t-shirts. I don't think the camera can show it very well, but we have these flyers, and it's Heroes Helping Heroes t-shirts that they have, I guess for Memorial Day, but that's for the month of May. And they will also have snacks, and they take very, very good care of people. So I really would like to encourage people to do that. We do it a couple times a year, and it's always been very successful. I want to thank the police department for the outreach that they've done, and also the city manager and some of the council members I know have done outreach, and that's a measure of success. We have never filled up all our appointments before, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments this evening?
I'm Saul Schneiderman, 306 Lincoln Avenue. Want to thank the mayor and council for recognizing Public Workers and Public Works Department, our city Public Works Department. I'm a longtime member of ASME, which is the same union that represents our sanitation workers and our Public Works staff here. This is the union that was involved in the 1968 Memphis sanitation strike, which was all over the news, and has a worldwide recognition of sanitation workers. Every time I haul my trash out to the street, I interact with our sanitation workers. And the first thing I say to them is, "How's the city treating you?" And they always reply, "Thanks for asking. I can't complain." So, good for us, and thank you for recognizing the Public Works staff here in the City of Tacoma.
Thank you very much. Okay, Arthur. I think the floor is yours.
Arthur David Olson, Ward 4, Herbie Hancock Avenue, and I am still not a lawyer. Tonight, the council held a fourth secret session on sexual harassment and subsequent events. There have been public readouts for the first two secret sessions. Maryland law requires readouts to include a listing of the topics of discussion, persons present, and each action taken during the session. No actions have been mentioned in either of the two readouts. This is in line with the sense I expressed two weeks ago that there is little for the council to do in this matter. According to the agenda for tonight, tonight's secret session was an administrative function session. Per Maryland law, administrative function means the administration of a law of the state, a law of a political subdivision of the state, or a rule, regulation, or bylaw of a public body. That's it. In the interest of transparency and openness, I hope the council will let the public know what laws, rules, regulations, and bylaws were being administered tonight and two weeks ago. And according to the agenda, tonight's secret session was, quote, "regarding evaluation of an outside legal firm to perform an independent audit." I can think of no good reason why this evaluation needs to be done in secret. I hope the council can provide one. Finally, my understanding is that while the Maryland Open Meetings Act allows secret sessions in some cases, it never requires secret sessions. I hope that going forward, in the matter at hand and in other matters, the council will conduct all business in open sessions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other general public comments?
Tom Gagliardo, I live in the City of Tacoma Park. All of you represent all of us. To follow up on my good friend and neighbor's comments, I've sent you a written comment on this. The Maryland Attorney General advises that the Open Meetings Act reflects a balance between, that the General Assembly has struck, between the public's need to know about the conduct of public business and the government's need, in special and appropriate circumstances, in special and appropriate circumstances, to address certain types of matters behind closed doors. In case of doubt, the balance tilts towards openness. The first question, when considering whether or not to close a meeting should be, is there any harm if we meet publicly? Contrary to the Attorney General's advice, it appears the first question all seven of you ask is, can we close the meeting? I'm hard pressed to think what harm would result from publicly discussing and receiving feedback about the selection of someone to conduct the audit. Now, you don't need an audit to do several things. So the question is, when? When will you tell us who approved the million-dollar settlement on behalf of the city? When will you tell us why the settlement for that amount was in the best interest of the city? When will you tell us why Mr. Black remained employed for two years? When will you tell us the criteria you adopted to evaluate firms seeking to do the audit? And when will you tell us which firms you have been or are now considering to do the audit? Stop hiding.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
Good evening. Sue Miller, Ward 3. Very briefly, following up, residents are still following the handling of this harassment case closely. So we're glad to see tonight some adjustment based on the new description posted today to the idea that the design parameters and scope of the audit are not legally protected and should never have been happening behind closed doors. Rectifying that situation now requires answers to these questions. When is the scope of the audit going to be discussed in a public work session? How long will the audit take? What will it cost the taxpayers? And will the audit be released in full to the public when it's done? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments?
My name is Karen Elrich from Ward 5. Every day I wake up and witness the unsettling disintegration of our federal government. I see alarming reports about people disappearing from our streets and hear of countless individuals losing their jobs without notice or justification. I talk with my neighbors at the local food pantry, who express the fear of walking in our streets. On a personal level, I'm concerned about the stability of my own finance. I worry about my social security and the Medicaid support my adult sons with disabilities rely on. I can't help but think of our neighbors who have even fewer resources and are facing these daunting challenges. In the words of Florence Kennedy, a feminist and civil rights activist, "Don't agonize, organize." I take this to heart, and it motivates me to stand before you tonight to ask, why are we gathered here discussing rent stabilization at such a pivotal moment in our history? Rent stabilization is working here in Tacoma Park for the people who need it. Who stands to benefit from this conversation? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
I'm Elizabeth Wallace, Ward 1. I don't feel that great this morning, this evening, so I'm just going to do it light. I want to ask a question. What do Jimmy Carter, Bruce Jenner, Nobel Prize-winning economist, Dr. Gary Becker, and former Miss America Margaret I have in common? Anybody know? They're all leaders, yes. They weren't born in Tacoma Park, but they were all school safety patrols. At recent meetings here and elsewhere in Tacoma Park, parents expressed the concern about the half hour or more of future commutes of their children to holding schools will cost them and their kids. While... to holding schools will cost them and their kids while the Piney Branch Elementary School is rebuilt. School bus patrols, that is. The older students could help maintain order on the buses to and from the school, as well as help provide for their child's safety. They could develop leadership skills and improve their self-esteem while they develop a sense of responsibility for others. Imagine the PTA, Piney Branch Elementary School, the Tacoma Park Police Department, getting together to work with the already established AAA Safety Patrol program. We need to rebuild trust with the police department, and this might be a way. Chevy Chase Elementary School has a program, and we could learn from them as well. Perhaps it's time to initiate the program now so that it could be a smooth transition when it becomes a real necessity for longer rides. While I've never said the Safety Patrol pledge myself, because back in the 60s at my school, girls weren't allowed to be patrols, I'd like to say for you now, this is what the students would be pledging. I promise to do my best to report for duty on time, perform my duties faithfully, strive to prevent injuries, always setting a good example myself, obey my teachers and officers of the patrol, report dangerous student practices, and strive to earn the respect of fellow students. Add this to the ABCs, and you have an even more well-rounded student. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments?
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Reed from Ward 2. Over the past several weeks, I've received numerous emails and often occasional visits to my home from neighbors asking me about Mrs. Cooper's sexual harassment issue. Some messages have been sent by friends and others. Most of them, I think, were probably sent to me because I serve as president in the Long Branch Schlegel Community Association. I also say that all the questions and concerns were raised by female members of a neighborhood. Not surprising, the issue arose at our association's most recent board meeting, so we shared thoughts and views, and one member read from Maryland Police Accountability Act, trying to elucidate the issues before us. And while the exchange was informative, we could not provide basic explanations about why and when certain actions were taken. And so, without tumbling down speculative rabbit holes about the motives of those handling the issue, we could not answer the even most basic question as to why, at that time, the perpetrator was still in the city's payroll. So please receive my appreciation for the council's decision to act expeditiously in undertaking an independent audit. And I was also pleased to learn this evening that the council has not precluded opening a public review of the terms of reference that will guide the selected legal firm conducting the audit. That scope of work, willingly or unwittingly, can exclude or try to capture important information about actions and actors that will help the public understand why events unfold as they did. For example, I asked my council representative, as she had become aware of both Ms. Cooper's charges and the first internal review in the early fall of 2020, when she and Mayor Stewart were still in office. And I asked, were the decisions taken those very earliest moments of the process, did they eliminate the more transparent and less costly solutions to the issue? Less costly financially and less costly in terms of public confidence? Were those early decisions important factors that led to denying the current council members basic information for two years until news was released in the press? Let me iterate that I have every reason to believe that all actions taken were with thoughtful consideration and honorable purpose. Nonetheless, at this moment, the most important responsibility of the city council is to renew the public's confidence in city government. And the only way to do that is through absolute transparency and openness. As best I can tell, there's absolutely nothing to lose and everything to gain by making sure all residents' concerns are covered by the audit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments? Do we have any virtual public comments? Wonderful. We're gonna move on to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? Councilmember Gilbert? Wait one second. I just want to make sure that your mic is on. Nope, that one's not working?
Nobody wants to hear me talk tonight? Check, check.
Okay, that one's on.
I just wanted to say a couple of words about our Public Works Department as well. I spent a good portion of my career coordinating and creating operations plans for every event that we've had in the city, at one point in time or another, from fireworks to the parade. And I can tell you, in developing those operations plans, the least of my worries was, was public works gonna do their jobs? And after each event, we do something, or we used to do something. I hope the police department is still doing it, because it's a good way to track our history and how these events go down. It's called an after-action plan. And I could not remember ever having to say anything negatively about something that public works could do better. So, we're in excellent hands with our Public Works Department, and I'm glad that we're recognizing you today. Really quick, the Recreation Department is going to be having their summer Youth Exposed to Success Basketball League. It's set to begin in June, June 6, I believe. And there are gonna be three divisions. I'm gonna be coaching a 7th grade team, I just found out recently. And the two locations will be Roland Terrace Elementary School and Tacoma Park Recreation Center. They're gonna go from 5th grade to 12th grade. And it just dawned on me, this is like the 40th year they've been doing this. The Youth Exposed to Success League was developed many years ago. I was one of the first coaches at age 16. And it's done a great job in developing young men and women and keeping them occupied during the summer. So, if you know some kids that aren't doing much this summer, let's see if we can get them involved. So, $35 fee for residents, $45 for non-residents, and then the Recreation Department is offering scholarships to those kids who are economically challenged. So, we don't want to turn any kids away. And really quick, the Second Annual Juneteenth Celebration, scheduled for June 19th, in honor of the 250,000 some odd souls that were kept enslaved in Texas some three years after the Emancipation Proclamation. We're gonna recognize and honor those souls on June 19th at Tacoma Park Middle School, 7611 Piney Branch Road. There'll be a band, some vendors, and more from noon to 6:00. So, let's keep that in mind and mark that off in our schedules. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Gilbert, do you have any other council comments? Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you. Thank you. Am I still on mic? Yeah. Good evening, everybody. It's really nice just to hear from so many people and see so many faces out here. I really appreciate you coming out. And I apologize that I wasn't physically present. I was online listening last week and then was able to listen to the rest of last week's test. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Listened to the chief of police from last week, which I really appreciated being able to hear, even though it took me a week to get to that. Very quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge that tomorrow night, I want to say thank you to the clerk's office, as well as the mayor. We'll be gathering at Essex House to give out recognition and appreciation that hasn't happened for about seven years. It used to happen on an annual basis before COVID. It was a lot of work for the city clerk's office, but I have a pile of certificates to give out to a lot of volunteers. And I just want to thank all the institutions and community groups that have been helping residents at Essex House throughout COVID and continuing onward to today, such as Small Things Matter, Adventist Relief Service Group, and Edge Care. I also want to share with folks, on May 26th, the Ward 5 neighborhood is having Memorial Day Potluck, which has been going on for many years. Thank neighbors for organizing that. And we also have, in the next week, as we did last year, the Second Annual Flower Avenue Together Party. This one is hosted by Discover Long Branch and Cheer this year. And I've been playing a large role also in just helping to bring people together on this. And the goal is, from my vantage point in particular, is to make sure city services are reaching out into this part of the city where they typically haven't always physically had feet on the ground. That was particularly important, you know, when we were delivering direct cash assistance programs and other things that weren't quite reaching this part of the city, as well as the MMPA process. And then more recently, there's been the East Silver Spring Planning Process. So, in all cases, for the last three years, we've been able to have these events in Ward 5. And I'm delighted that the city and Montgomery County Planning will have boots on the ground for this event. So, that's gonna be on May 31st from 2:00 to 5:00. And we'll also have youth talent groups giving us dancing celebrations. And there is a youth sticker contest. We just voted on the winning sticker, so you'll get to see the winning youth. And also, our Long Branch small businesses will have tables throughout, so I hope you'll join us for that event. And I think that's all right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanzak, do we have any other council comments this evening? Councilmember Landman?
Very briefly, thank you to all of the comments we heard this evening about the audit and about rent stabilization in particular. I wanted to acknowledge the comments that were made, the strong interest in openness, which I share, and I appreciate that you're holding our feet to the fire. And I take issue a little bit with the idea that it is never, that none of the matters that we've been dealing with in administrative session belong in administrative session, but we have done our very best to narrow down what was discussed in administrative session in our efforts to comply with the applicable rules. I wanted to flag that there are two remaining planned meetings about the Piney Branch Elementary School and pool still coming up, which I'm hoping one of my neighbors will double-check this for me, but I think the next one is May 28th at 7:00 o'clock at Piney Branch. And the next one after that is June 4th.
29th.
Sorry, May 29th and June 4th. And that we have requested that they also schedule a virtual meeting. I haven't heard anything yet from this school about that, but I think it's really important for our community to pull together and try and come together around a recommended design and to support the, ensure that we still have a pool when this process is over. And so, I wanted to encourage people who have been going to keep going and people who haven't been going to try and get to those meetings and help us find a good way to take care of the kids during the construction process, which is something we'll all have to deal with. But we'll, at the end of the day, I hope, have a new facility or a much renovated facility for us to utilize as a community, which we very much need. And I also wanted to tell my councilmember Elizabeth Wallace that I myself was the captain of the school bus safety patrol. And I strongly believe in the idea that kids can help other kids behave on the bus and do so safely. So, I think it's a great idea. I want to look into it and along with the safety patrol.
Thank you. Councilmember Landman, Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you. I was really happy that we had the proclamation for National Public Works Week. And I wanted to mention that I actually worked for the Durham, North Carolina Sanitation Department early in my career, and I have huge respect for all of the people who I worked with there and all the roles that they take on, and I got to take on many of them during my time. And it is worth noting also that many public works people are in danger from traffic when they're on the job. And we should take a special care and urge everyone to take special care when we're passing public works people doing their jobs for us. Thank you to Catherine Tunis and the Police Department for the blood drive. And I'm so glad that it's fully filled up right now, and I hope some more spots can become available. Karen Elrich, thank you so much for your comment on rent stabilization. I feel so strongly that whatever we're gonna be doing over the next month and whatever that leads into, certainly must focus on the well-being of tenants, on maintaining or improving the quality of the places they live, preserving their stability, and that there should be nothing, nothing, that is involved with displacing people or that could have opened the door to that. I appreciated the Safety Patrol idea from Ms. Wallace, and I would add one suggestion to the pledge, which is that you obey the bus driver as well. All of the calls for transparency are so important and appreciated. To that point of what harm can be done in a public discussion, I just want to be clear, I've been studying the same guidance that Mr. Gargliardo cited. I've never been involved in putting together, or helping to put together, a public body's audit of events that occurred in a public organization. So, there's no doubt that such a process can be bumpy and unpredictable. But to be clear, there's nothing in Maryland law saying that bumpiness and unpredictability are grounds for keeping processes private. And I think you can count on me to contribute a fair share of bumpiness and unpredictability at any council meeting. All this being said, I am satisfied that the session we just came from, as Councilmember Landman said, heaved very closely to that topic that the mayor described. Just the last couple things, if you live in the Wacko area, remember that there's a Zoom conversation tomorrow about safety and traffic and things. And also, keep your ears peeled. I have a lot of interest from people to do a listening session about the Piney Branch Elementary School questions, so I'm gonna be organizing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schlegel, Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah, just one thing, speaking of public works. So, and thanks to all of you who came out to comment, and thanks to Catherine for your role in organizing the blood drives. I think our family's got one of those slots, those prized slots. But what I wanted to say concerns Public Works Week. So, many of you know there was a concert in Forest Park for federal workers over the weekend. It was a fabulous concert. It was a gorgeous day. What you don't know is the work that the city gardening and maintenance staff did to get that park in shape during the few days before the concert. So, I want specifically to thank the public work staff for all the work you guys did to get that park up to peak performance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dibala?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And again, I stress all the time, keep us accountable. That's, I appreciate the calls for transparency. And please know that we are doing our due diligence to be responsive to the calls for transparency, while simultaneously working to do our due diligence in terms of understanding there's certain aspects of what we need to do where it is important for us to make sure that we're able to protect the privacy of certain individuals as we are having certain discussions. So, again, tonight was about discussing possible options for attorneys or for law firms. And so, it did stick to what was being discussed and what I described before in terms of evaluation of potential firms for consideration. I also want to add myself to the list of a former school patrol. I was a patrol as well. So, definitely have a special place in my heart for those that are wearing the yellow belts. I'm sorry, mine's was the orange belts, I should say. So, lots of things happened this weekend. Want to thank everyone for all of the wonderful events that occurred. Special thanks to the Purple Line Corridor Coalition for organizing the amazing walk. Councilmember Schlegel and Councilmember Westlech participated in it. And we had an opportunity to not only hear from different folks at the state, SHA, DOT, and the like, but to hear from business owners, from residents that live along in the Tacoma-Lanley crossroads areas and the experiences that they are going through with construction. And I think it's really important for us to make sure that we are listening to those that have the lived experience, to really speak to not only the impact that construction can have on their lives today, but what they're hoping will happen in the future in terms of their ability to stay in the community. So, I want to thank all of the organizers for putting that together. It was wonderful. Special thanks to organizers of the Forest Park Music Fest. That was awesome. Special thanks to organizers of the Forest Park Music Fest, that was awesome. Had an opportunity to participate in that. And also, the Crossroads Community Food Fair and the Village of Tacoma Park Potluck. Wonderful, wonderful desserts. Amazing desserts. But I also want to just echo my appreciation to the Village of Tacoma Park for all of the work that you do to support our seniors in our community. And also, on Monday, I had an opportunity to participate on a panel at the Foreign Policy for America Summit to talk about climate, resiliency, and security, but from a local perspective, which is very different when you're talking to a very internationally focused audience. So I do want to send my appreciation to the organizers for considering me, and it truly was a wonderful exchange of ideas. In terms of what's coming up next this week, tomorrow, want to remind folks that there's a Acoustics and Ales Free Outdoor, All Ages Outdoor Party that's happening at Flower Avenue Urban Park, and that's tomorrow, from 5:00 to 7:30. I may, I was at a, an event this weekend with Park Police, and they said, remember to remind people about this because we will be there. And, but I will also be at the Essex House Meeting, that is tomorrow at 6:00, and the blood drive. Oh, and also, I have the fortune of attending on Friday morning, the commencement breakfast for Montgomery College, so looking forward to that. With that, I will turn things over to Deputy City Manager Eubanks to share the, oh, one thing before I do that. I just want to, again, echo all of the sentiments for our Public Works Department. It was, it's already been shared that they are everywhere, and they truly are everywhere. Every single event that we have as a community, they play a role. And not only trash pickup, keeping us safe in terms of addressing issues in the roads and, and the like, but they do it with a smile, and they do it with such, such grace, and they entertain the children while they're picking up the trash. And so it's not just about doing their jobs, which is so important, but it's also the fact that they have such a, a spirit of service that they are bringing to the community. So I do want to thank our, our Public Works Department in recognition of Public Works Week. And so with that, I will turn things over to Deputy City Manager Eubanks for the City Manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Good evening, residents, staff, and special guests. From Housing and Community Development, beginning Wednesday, May 21st, single lanes on the northbound Carroll Avenue between Sherman Avenue, excuse me, Sherman Avenue and Jefferson Avenue and Tacoma Park will be closed for gas line replacement. Pedestrian and vehicular traffic will be directed through the work zone by temporary traffic control devices as well as flagmen. Lane closures will take place 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Mondays through Fridays. The expected duration of the work will be 90 days, weather permitting. Regular traffic patterns are projected to resume on September 22nd, 2025. Ride on routes 12 and 13 may see delays due to this utility work. Access to bus stops will be provided, but may be shifted from regular locations. Please pay attention to signage and flaggers. If you have questions regarding the closures during construction, please contact Karen Maldano. Her email address and phone number will be included in the City Manager's comments posted on the website. From the Police Department, ahead of the Memorial Day Weekend, we just wanted to remind everyone that the Montgomery County, that in Montgomery County, all fireworks, including sparklers, are illegal. Private use and possession of fireworks, including sparklers, carries a fine of $500. It is against the law to sell fireworks in Maryland, and it carries a fine of $1,000. From our Public Works Department, on Wednesday, May 28th, Public Works will collaborate with the Tacoma Park Elementary and Forest Explorers to host the school's STEM Day at Stewart Armstrong Pollinator Arboretum. Almost every student will visit the renovated city site and participate in a facilitated scavenger hunt and exploration. And from Recreation, a big congrats to Haven Road Recreation Team Program Supervisor on graduating with a dual master's degree in public administration and nonprofit management. She graduated from the University of Central Florida. It's no small feat balancing school, work, and everything in between, and she's done it with dedication and purpose in every step of the way. Her passion for serving youth and her commitment to growing as a leader show in everything she does. We're lucky to have her on our team and excited to see what's next for her. Well deserved, Haven.
Wonderful.
And from the City Manager's Office, in honor of National Public Works Week, this week's shout out is to our Public Works staff. The City Manager's Office would like to personally recognize our incredible Public Works team, not just for what they do, but how they do it. This year's theme, People, Purpose, and Presence, really speaks to the heart of this department, whether it's responding quickly to weather events, keeping our streets and sidewalks in good condition, managing waste collection, or advancing our environmentally, excuse me, environmental and sustainability goals. The Public Works team is constantly showing up for this community with skill, pride, and purpose. From maintaining the infrastructure, we rely on protecting our urban forests, to leading our climate action work. Their reach extends into nearly every aspect of daily life in Tacoma Park. They're often the first ones in and last ones out, and they rarely get the spotlight. So tonight, I want to personally thank Public Works, the Public Works Department. You are seen, your impact is felt, and the city is better because of you. And this concludes the City Manager's Report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And so with that, we're going to move to our presentations for the evening. The first presentation is of Performance, the Performance Measurement Design Project and Draft Report.
Thank you, Mayor. This conversation is a continuation of our previous conversation on the same topic. The last time, the Metropolitan Strategies and Solutions Team was before you, was to discuss generally the aim and process, and tonight, the same team is going to be discussing a draft report. So Council has received the draft report. The draft report has also been posted online. At the same time, Council's reviewing the draft report, staff is also reviewing the report. And everyone has until the 28th to send comments to the consulting team to be incorporated in the final draft. So I will now turn over the presentation to Mr. Luan Strickland to, again, introduce his team and lead us through tonight's presentation. Thank you, Luan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, the management team, as well as the citizens of the city of Tacoma, of Tacoma Park. Thank you for the opportunity again to present to you guys, again, as promised before, we have the draft report, and I'm joined by my colleagues to walk you through the details of this report. And I just want to just say thank you for all the hard work from, from the City Management Team to helping us get to this point, and we appreciate all the support, and we wouldn't have gotten there without the, the collaborative teamwork from you guys. Thank you for that. Without further ado, I want to introduce one of our partners, Michael Taylor, and he's joined by Sidney Pettigo, which is our Deputy Director, and we also have one of our associates, Rashawn Park. So, Michael Taylor?
All right. Thank you, Luan. We've distilled 78 pages worth of insights into this presentation, so I'm going to try to be as expeditious as possible. Please stop and ask questions. And in each section, we've indicated which part of the report that we're giving a high level overview of. So there's tons of details in there, and we're really looking forward to get your feedback. I just want to iterate again that we are in draft mode. We're actively taking feedback throughout this process, so. We'll quickly go over, give a little bit of project background. These are some slides I'm going to go quickly through, you've already seen them. Talk about the framework, the methodology, and then we'll give our current state assessment. We will talk about the selected draft performance measures. Then we're going to talk in depth about a couple different approaches for implementation and technology stack. So we've sort of given three different options for approaches in the implementation phase. But I have to start with Mr. Drucker. He's the, the founder of Modern Performance Management, and I think, I share this quote with a, a lot of my clients to say, if you can't measure it, you can improve it. And what we want to stress is these performance measures are not created to measure individual staff performance or department against department performance, but it is, we're building these to set a baseline for continuous improvement, for understanding your operations, and building a culture of data-driven decision-making. A little bit of background, you've already seen this, so I'm going to move through these slides quickly. Just want to reiterate, we're in the design phase right now. Like Mr. Eubank said, May 28th, we're taking feedback until then. The project, the design phase ends the first week of June, and then we'll move into the implementation phase of actually bringing these performance measures to life. We've already talked about the many benefits of performance measures, not going to go into detail there, but what I do want to point out is in the top right-hand corner of this slide, you can see that Section 1 is where you'll find a lot more about the scope, purpose, and benefits of these performance measures. So as I move quickly through this presentation, that is where you can find more in the report. This is the performance measure framework, which we presented last time. Again, we, we want to reiterate that these were built from the department level to be feasible, to be operational, to be relevant, but tied to the strategic priorities set by this council. So we're tying it together. So I'm going to talk about our approach. We've taken a rigorous approach since January. We've looked at peer cities, we've done extensive research on best practices, we've had at least two meetings with each department, sometimes more, and the initial draft lists of performance measures was 285. Of those 285 potential performance measures, we've worked with the departments to select 42 performance measures for the first iteration of this report. And I'm going to go into detail just to say that this is a starting point, and every year, departments will be revisiting their list, their extensive list of researched performance measures, to ensure that the performance measures that are selected remain the most relevant to measuring performance against strategic priorities, but also the, the changing projects that the city is implementing. And what we've done is for each performance measure that was deemed relevant but not ready, we've annotated why, and that could be because there's a lack of data, there's system modernizations occurring, and, and so as that list is revisited on an annual basis, we have the thought and context behind why performance measures were selected or delayed for future iterations. When we were assessing Tacoma Park's current state, what we looked at is, yes?
The updated presentation will be provided.
Thank you.
The clerk has the updated one. It will be posted on the website.
Apologies for that. Yep, keep going. We assessed the city of Tacoma's parks data management framework across four different areas, in data collection, data management, data analysis, and data reporting. And you'll see that framework carried out in our current state assessment, but also in our future state recommendations. And our initial assessment showed that across these areas, the, the city is collecting a lot of data. We assess the city at a foundational level. Each department is collecting data, data is reported on the website and in the budget. And so we, we believe that there is a strong foundation for implementation of these performance measures. Where we assess the current state of Tacoma Park in, in the management level is at a basic level, because we saw a lot of this data is siloed at the department level. So there's opportunity in this next phase to put this data into a centralized repository for easier analysis and reporting. So that's going to be a key part of our recommendations. As far as analysis, there is analysis of existing performance measures going on, and, but it's at the foundational level, looking at FTEs in the budget, year-over-year budget allocation, so there is room for deeper analysis, and we go into our recommendations of the analysis phase. At the reporting level, existing performance measures are reported in the budget, but there is opportunity to advance reporting through the website, via dashboards, reports, and we go into detail about how the city could implement that in the next phase. Any questions on this before we move on? Okay, we have five strategic priorities, and again, we've aligned all of the draft performance measures to one of your strategic priorities. So what I have, I'm showing on the screen is all of the selected draft performance measures that are tied to advancing a community of belonging. So I'm just going to pause here and allow Council and the residents to read through and give any feedback. Our, our team's taking live feedback, and we'll go through each strategic priority one by one.
Council, Councilmember Hansak?
Could you, could you just share, are these, are these performance measures things that we are already measuring, or is there a mix here?
There, there's a mix, and let me give you an example. So the first one, employee diversity ratios, that is, employee demographics are currently captured in the human resource system. The next piece is tying it to census data to say, this is the demographic makeup of Tacoma Park, so that you can make that comparison to say, the, the staff is reflective of the community. So as I mentioned before, there is a lot of data that's being collected by the city, but tying it to outcomes and performance is really that next, next step.
But could, could you just elaborate a little bit, like looking at this list, for example, how many of these are we, approximately, are we already collecting where we wouldn't have to go out and do additional data collection, just to get the numbers?
I would, I would say 75 to 80% of the data is already being collected.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, I think Councilmember Dibala, and then Landman.
Now, we, we may not get through this if we start, start interrupting you, but I, as a general question, when I read through the slides in the report, the tactical objectives and the performance measures, the performance measures, some of them seem to be, if I've got this right, what departments thought they wanted to measure, which is, which is good and important to know. But, but are you looking for feedback from, from the council on what measures we would like to see? Because there doesn't, in some cases, seem to be a direct correlation. There also seems in some cases to be, again, this would be fine if it's true, that in a broad, in a broad objective, like applying a racial equity lens, there's, there's half a dozen ways you could measure it, and you, and you, it looks like you pick one or two, but could you clarify those, those points a little bit? Because I, I may be interpreting.
Absolutely. That's a, that's a fantastic question, and I think what, what we want to reiterate is there were 285 measures that were initially thought of, and our focus was giving departments a feasible measure where there's data and in year one, it can be implemented. And you bring up a great point, and I'm just going to give a little vignette, so water quality is hugely important to all of our communities, and when we were talking about that measure, there is so much upstream pollution that affects the water quality in this community, and we determined that that's not a good performance measure for the department because they don't have a lot of control, even though that is an extremely important measure for the community. And this is why you're probably looking at these and saying, this, these are very specific, very targeted, and as you mentioned, there could be 20 different ways to measure diversity, but what we wanted to do was make this feasible and practical for implementation in year one, and this is just the first step. And I want to reiterate that, that every year, as more systems are brought online, as the city continues to digitize their infrastructure, that this framework can be built upon. So this is a starting point, but thank you very much for that question.
And, and as Michael suggested earlier, there are...
And as Michael suggested earlier, there are 280-some-odd potential metrics. And part of the analysis, as Michael indicated, was what can we do now with the resources that we have and resources that we anticipate having in the next year or two years? Right, we haven't, we haven't fully received our recommendations yet. Nor has council given staff any particular direction on how we ought to implement these metrics, as well as the larger universal metrics. And so there are some of those metrics that I think are more directly aligned to these tactical objectives in the 285. However, for any of the many reasons listed, it's potentially a lower priority. It's potentially that we don't have data available. It's potentially that the outcomes are difficult to measure, so on and so forth. So there are a number of categories of reasons why some of those 285 were not selected in this initial round. But that doesn't mean that they may not be considered for further consideration. We anticipate, excuse me, further possibility at a later phase. We anticipate that this is an iterative process, right? So as we improve our ability to collect, as we improve our ability to manage, we expect to be able to add portions of that 285 into the data that we are presenting to the public over time.
Well, thank you for that, because that wasn't really clear to me. And if anything, I think this, it already is too ambitious for one year. But we'll get to that later.
Councilmember Lynam?
Through no fault of your own, your process began while we were still struggling with our own council priorities. And my initial question is whether you have had a chance to or plan to screen the selected targets based upon changes that have occurred in our council priorities as you're setting the year-one targets. And the second half of my question is whether, when you were selecting these for year one, whether it was part of your objective to pick things that would lend themselves to some kind of a unified field theory of how the data are going to be collected and managed? Like, did you pick things that lent themselves to the three, one or more of the three methodologies? Some things might be better than others for that purpose as a sort of a training exercise. I, I'll give you an example of why I'm asking this. I'm not sure why participation rate in wellness programs rises to the level of the key strategic, anything for the cybersecurity infrastructure. It might be the dismissal labeled in this chart. But it may not even be that important. But maybe it's because it's easier to collect the data and show it? Is that why you picked some of them?
Yeah. David, do you want to hit on the first one?
Yeah, just the, the first question regarding whether or not we've been tracking council's progress. Yes, we've been sharing that information with Metropolitan Strategies along the way. The good thing is that I think at a high level, those changes will not ultimately change, I think, a lot of the metrics that we intend on measuring. However, the final report will reflect council's final priorities. And Michael, if you don't mind, taking a second one.
Absolutely. Another, another great question. And really, again, what drove our thinking in these measures was that framework of, can we collect the data? Can it be aggregated and managed across departments? Can we perform the analysis? And can we report it out to those that are making decisions? So each one of these, we took through that evaluation criteria to say, yes, in year one, this may not be the best representation of measuring the tactical objective or strategic priority, but it is feasible from an implementation standpoint, so.
So I do want to piggyback a little bit because this is the one thing that made me kind of nervous when we decided to make the measures, develop the performance measures as they relate to the council priorities, because council priorities change. And I did think you were going to go in a different direction regarding the cybersecurity infrastructure. Because, you know, you have the external threats. You also have internal threats to cybersecurity. And so the idea being, people that work for you are happier. They're less likely to want to sabotage your organization internally and therefore, and therefore, you know, create some sort of insider threat.
Hence the wellness.
Hence the wellness. Like, it's, as a measure development person, there's a wild, you can go through a very roundabout way to come up with some proxy for something. But, but the, I think the, the piece that I just want to make sure that I'm not missing, because I think that some of, like, the goal of a performance measure and the goal of establishing targets is to what, is to make sure that you're able to measure long enough to assess the extent to which you're meeting the target. And so you don't want to find yourself in a situation where you're establishing performance measures, and then every year, you're throwing them out the door because you've changed to a new council priority and you're no longer finding it valuable. No, you need to measure those items over time to be able to assess the extent to which you're meeting the specified target. So I, I think it will be important for us to, of course, thinking about things from the perspective of, you know, the priorities, but also kind of taking things at a little bit of a higher level and recognizing that they, they may not be a direct one-to-one to a council priority in terms of that technical objective. But they may serve as really good proxies for assessing. For example, we talk generally about outreach, reading, reaching hard-to-reach populations. How are we making sure that we're increasing engagement? If you were to mix up some of these measures that you have tied to different tactical objectives in a different way, you would have a subset of measures that speak to that. So the percent of total communications translated to priority languages other than English, combined with the percentage of recreation marketing materials translated into Spanish or Amharic, combined with other, you know, measures that you may have that may relate to engagement with non-English speakers, which isn't necessarily a tactical objective that is explicitly called out in a council priority. But the intent of some of our council priorities are to try to meet some of the hard-to-reach populations. So I think that when we're looking at this, it's important for us to look at it from the perspective of what the tactical objectives were and what the council priorities were. But to also look at the performance measures in terms of how they may be mapped in a slightly different way to serve as really good proxies for the intent of future, future council priorities and the like. So that's just kind of spinning a little bit in terms of, in terms of the concerns that I have about, you know, how some of these council priorities and objectives change over time, but how we may be able to leverage the measures that are developed in a way to kind of speak to the intent or the spirit of what the council is striving to achieve. Councilmember Schlegel.
Thank you for that. I'm just thinking about, the four members of my family, we might have, from time to time, whoever gets in the car might have a different performance measure that they're interested in. Like, my spouse might be interested in, is the car clean inside? But probably everybody would be, over a long term, everybody getting in the car would be interested in what mileage it was getting, you know? So just really quick, my questions, just, I'll just float them. You mentioned the difficulty of doing measures that rely on upstream factors that could change because, that are basically out of the control of staff sometimes to, you know, to make progress predictably. The number of crime tips received from residents. Would that be one that might be subject to, you know, changes in the nature of crime over time? Is that, is that something where you might invite some feedback from us? Like, if we see one that looks like possibly, you know, it could be just that crime is down and so we're not getting as many tips? Also, related to that, is it, I was looking at some performance, a performance metrics report from Kirkland, Washington. And they, they would report where their percentages are reported. They would also report raw numbers, that you can see, oh, wow, the percentage changed drastically, but it's a really small number. So it, it kind of helped you to keep it in perspective. Is that something that, could, could one measure have percentage as well as raw number in it?
Let me, let me talk about the first point, because I think it's, it's very important. There is a lot of context that is needed for all of these measures. And again, we've annotated a lot of that context in working with the departments. And that is going to need to be communicated by the senior leadership team and council. You bring up a great one. Number of crime tips, well, that's great, but it also could mean something really bad, right? You could have a huge spike in crime, and that's why tips are coming in. And you can make similar comments for a lot of these. But what I, what I want to stress is, you're, you're really not going to know how useful these are until you baseline your data. And that's going to happen in year one. And that's just, that, that is a fact. So what we've done here is, we've tried to think through those important contexts and annotations and denote that in, in our report. And so that when you collect the data, you can evaluate that baseline and say, hey, is this meaningful or not? And, and this, again, goes back to why we invested so much time in developing 284 to say, hey, this might actually not be the right one. So that's a hugely important point. So thank you for bringing that up.
And the question was just about, the second was about percentage and raw numbers?
What we've done, and we're going to talk about the data infrastructure and data management recommendations next, is if the city invests in a data warehouse or an advanced business intelligence tool, you are going to unlock a world of possibilities with the data that you get. And these tools will allow you to filter and slice and dice. You can get raw numbers. You can get comparisons, year-over-year comparisons. And if that's something that the city decides to fund, it is going to open up your ability to truly understand your operations. So yes, that will be available if you make some of the technology investments that are in a couple of the approaches ahead.
And I just want to be mindful of, of time. So if we can continue to move through the presentation, and then that way, if folks can kind of just hold their questions to the end, and then that way, we can make sure that we'll have enough time.
I'm going to just ask the council, would you like me to pause on, on each of these five strategic priorities?
Did you bring the sleeping bag?
Then what I suggest is, please, please read through them and send our team feedback. We have, we will take feedback at any time of the night, and we'll get you all out of here.
Awesome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so moving on, what, what does successful implementation look like? And what we've done here is outlined steps for implementation. And we're saying, implementation starts after design phase, right? Design phase is over in two weeks. And there's a whole bunch of actions that are needed in the implementation phase to get you to that first performance measure report. So that's strategic planning, data structuring and management, design and development of these reports, or dashboards, or outputs. And then a whole lot of process documentation, training, and launching the program. Once that is complete, then on an annual basis, there will be actions to ensure that the, this framework stays relevant and tied to the strategic priorities. So that is implementing these at senior leadership team meetings, implementing data-driven decision-making, publishing these for the public, getting comment on them, but also updating the framework from the data management side, from the technology side. So there, there are a lot of systems that are being modernized in the city. And once those are modernized, hooking those data pipelines up into whatever business intelligence tool is procured or used for these. So this is going to be an ongoing project, both on the strategic side, but also on the technology side. And we have a whole implementation plan in the Performance Measure Strategy Report. At a very high level, we're recommending three potential approaches. The first approach is foundational. That's using tools that the city has existing licenses on. It is using cloud-based spreadsheets and basic data visualizations. So that's sort of the, you can do this with your existing technology. A hybrid approach is where you use these cloud-based spreadsheets, but you go and procure a business intelligence tool to build a dashboard or report and put all of this data into, to create an intuitive, compelling output for your decision-makers. And then there, finally, there's an intermediate where you go and procure a modern cloud-based data warehouse. That would, that would mean bringing on staff with very specific technical skills, such as a database architect. And, and what we've done is, we've outlined pros and cons of each approach's, levels of effort, strengths and weaknesses. Up here, you're seeing each approach, the assessment level that we think the city would achieve by investing in each of these approaches. Just going to very quickly go over some advantages and disadvantages to each approach. So the foundational approach, it's cost-effective, intuitive, and user-friendly. So almost all staff, and even new staff onboarding, know how to use cloud-based spreadsheets. It's easy collaboration. But there's some serious disadvantages. You can have spreadsheet chaos. You can have different staff manually entering data, which causes quality issues. And it places a higher burden on existing department staff. The hybrid, hybrid approach is using those cloud-based spreadsheets, but introducing a business intelligence tool. Some of the advantages there is, you can hook up existing Tacoma Park systems automatically to that business intelligence tool, and data will flow automatically. So it's going to take some of that burden off of existing staff. It's going to remove some of the manual data entry. And it's going to give you some really powerful and impactful reporting and visualization capabilities. That, that will incur additional licensing costs and professional services costs to build those dashboards and to set up those automated data pipelines. And, and finally, building on that intermediate approach, where you bring on the business intelligence tool, but also bring on a data warehouse, you're likely going to need to hire a full-time database architect to implement that throughout the, throughout the city. Again, you're going to get a lot of scalability out that, enhanced security in governments. And you're going to, you're going to set the city up to really scale your analytics capabilities overall. We've outlined some technology options, which I won't go into in detail. And up here, we've given a rough level of estimate in hours. So in the implementation phase, by role. So an internal performance management lead, what that would look like for a performance management champion. We're recommending one per department. And a rough level of estimate of professional services hours. And then in the second, the post-implementation, those, those hours are on an annual basis in addition to the software licensing costs. All right, I've thrown a lot out there. Now's, now's a chance for questions, comments, and more feedback.
Councilmember Wassilek.
Thank you so much. I really enjoy this kind of stuff. My question is, it looks like, at no point is the recommendation to move everyone to one type of database, right? It sounds like in each of these three models, it'd still be reliant on Google Sheets, for example. But it's then a matter of how that data is, then flows through? Is that, is that correct understanding?
That's correct for the foundational and hybrid approach. In the intermediate approach, it would be procuring a cloud data warehouse where all department data would be centrally stored. And so that, that's your, your big three, your Azure, GCP, and Microsoft, so.
Okay.
And, and, but with the big caveat that you are going to have to hire a full-time database architect to, to manage and run that. And that, that comes with a lot of downstream effects. If that person leaves, then you got to onboard someone else to take that over. So it is, there's a lot of benefits, but there's a lot of costs incurred in that approach.
Right. Can I, just a follow-up on that. So then... So then with the foundational or hybrid, it's not necessarily adding any staff. But with the intermediate, well, I, I see like hours here for a database administrator. But that would be different than a database architect. So is that one new staff or is it two, or is it a short-term and then an ongoing administrator?
So that would be a, a full-time one. I said, yeah, database of architect administrator, that, yeah.
Okay.
Same, same person, and that would be a full-time hire. And that, the only approach that would require that would be the intermediate approach.
Thank you.
One thing I, I do want to stress is there, there's no free lunch. Because on the foundational approach, there's a lot of hours that you're going to put on existing staff that are already stretched thin. So it's not just turn, you know, that one's less and this one's more. There's, there's pros and cons to all of it.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Okay. So I, I do want to, I guess you can go back to the slide about the options. And so I guess for, for me, part of the challenge is, in terms of the options, is trying to figure out, and it just requires spending a little bit more time with the report, where the bulk of the data is housed versus, you know, period. Where is the data housed? Because it, it seemed to me that there are some measures that are noted here where the source of where that data would be housed would likely be, for example, our new HR system. And I would assume that certain aspects of that data would be able to be downloaded and back-end in a way that would allow for someone who's savvy with this kind of thing, could do a data export, know how to code, put it into Power BI, Tableau and start cooking with grease. The, but there are other data that I'm not exactly sure if that data is currently captured at all or captured in a way that is structured within a system, right? So in that case, it, it would be a lot more complicated. And I think that's why, going back to councilmember Westle's point around the Google Sheets. Because it, it would seem that, and I'm not exactly sure about how all of our rec department kind of handles their data, but I'm looking at the clerk's office, the percentage of inquiries about voting process resolved within two business days. Where on earth do we count that, right? And, and how would we capture that? And what system would that go into, right? So when we are thinking through the longer-term approach, it just seems to me that in some instances, the data would be structured and standardized in a way that based on these new systems that we're, we're acquiring would be relatively easy, so to speak, in terms of data, data download and, and working with those data. But there's a bunch of others that are not stored in a way that makes sense. So are you all proposing that this system, in terms of this hybrid approach or the intermediate, would, would also allow for the flexibility to work within the point of data, data everywhere? And then making sure that whatever you have laying, and I'm, I'm maybe getting a little too tech, technical. But whatever, whatever system you have laying on top, right? So like, for example, you could Power BI or Tableau, as long as those Google Sheets can be downloaded into a CSV file, you can merge those data, pop them in there. They can auto-feed and you, you're working. But I agree with you, you would need someone that knows how to code and how to do that. So I think that's the piece that I would imagine that even with a hybrid, so going back to the hybrid cost estimate. And I'm not exactly sure what goes into the licensing. But having an FTE and you would need a, a, a savvy data person, even in the hybrid option.
Well, it sounds like you know what you're doing. Because these are very specific details that are important to think through. So I'm, I'm going to go piece by piece.
Yeah.
There are, there are some performance measures that will never be automated. If you look in here, they are, you know, tracking community events. It's not worth the time to automate all that. But we've talked specifically to, to each department about what this looks like in implementation. So for the meeting minutes, for this meeting, it, they're going to be logged in a smart sheet or a Google Sheet. And if you procure a Tableau or Power BI, you could set up an automated data pull from that. So that's on the, the manual side, that won't be going away. But to your point about information coming out of a human resource system or financial system, you could set up those automated data pipelines. And our recommendation is that you hire a professional services firm to do that one-time automation, build that dashboard or report. And then those, that, those folks could go away after implementation.
Okay.
So that's kind of why we're calling it the hybrid approach. Yes, it's a, it's a bigger one-time cost, but all of that gets implemented and it's set on a refresh. And then you, you don't need a database architect long-term. So that's, you know, on the foundational approach, it, it's all manual. It's pulling that data out of a system, putting it in a spreadsheet. So that's kind of, you know, on the, the manual and foundational, easy to use. You can do it with the existing staff to advanced and everything in between. So those are, those are good points to understand.
Thank you. And that would mean too, though, that you would need that FTE if you're trying to do any work beyond just dashboarding pie charts of your performance measures. So if, let's say, for example, folks want to do comparisons and they want to do overlays with census data and they want to try to actually see how, you know, GIS, how that stuff kind of relates to geography and the demographics of our community, you would need a data person to be able to work a lot of that.
You, you would need a, you could go one of two ways. And you could probably price this out. What is a, what does an FTE look like? Or what is a retainer with your professional services firm? Hey, we have a new system that came online, update the dashboard and then that goes rinse and repeat, so.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Councilmember Landman?
I just, just, my question's going to sound like the kindergarten class has been reconvened after that discussion, so apologies. But I'm just like looking at the performance measures in, I'm looking at page forty-two, forty-three and thereabouts in the report in chief to try and understand how these will help somebody like me on the city council trying to evaluate the measures that the community wants to know more about. And I look at this, at the measures for the police department in particular. And I know you have tried to link them to our city's strategic priorities, but not, those priorities don't necessarily really give a window into the measures that matter for police performance because they're, they're not worded in terms of like public safety. They have a much more generic feel. And I looked at what this, the elements that you propose as the measures here and for example, compared them to what Rockville or the Montgomery County Police Department considers key performance measures. And they don't really capture the things that tell you about, for example, the speed with which we, police can respond to an emergency call or the rate of closure of important part-one cases. There are much more number of complaints received per number of calls for service. That's important, but it doesn't necessarily reflect public safety. So if you could just comment on whether that's just, you know, when, when, when the system is up and running, is it going to give me those kind of performance measures as well? Or will that be in some other separate police database? Because with this alone, I'm not really that much better off in comparing the quality of my police department to other police department's performance.
Yep, very good question. And one thing that we looked at with each department is what is already being reported? So if you go on the city's website, there are, there's every single crime statistic that you could ever want. And what we didn't want to do is replace the existing data that is being published. So the police department has very advanced systems. Every type of crime is reported every week on the website. And what we wanted to do here was to work on measures that were both reflective of department performance, but tied to the strategic priorities. So that's why these, these probably look a little bit different than just regular data that's reported in different cities because we really tried to operationalize them against, against your priorities. So great point, these, these aren't representative of public safety of the city, but those are already, already available. And if you invest in all of this technology and infrastructure, it will allow you to tie both those crime statistics with some of the more internal department's performance measures that we've outlined here.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Yeah, this is kind of built off of councilmember Landman's question, I guess. I was, I've been wanting to ask how, in your working with other municipalities or public organizations, how, do you have any insights about how the measures can be made useful for both the management side and the, the public body, that in this case, the council? And do you have any suggestions for how we as a council and, and the manager, and deputy city manager and everyone else, might negotiate? Or what would be useful things to be thinking about as we negotiate these measures?
So I'll, I'll talk about it in, in how they roll up. So at the department level, for department leads, these are operational measures. And what we've recommended with the senior leadership team is that these are reviewed on a monthly or quarterly basis. And, excuse me, first looking at the baseline data. So you're not, you're not going to understand your operations until you probably get six months to a year of this data. And some of these measures already have baselines, they're already being collected. Others will be baseline in the first year. So looking at various trends, comparing across measures. So if, for example, average service time is down, but you're short three FTEs in that department, it's telling the city manager and this council that maybe you need to invest more resources into that department. However, if you're fully staffed and your service time is going up, that's an indication that something's wrong. So individually, these measures aren't going to tell you a lot until you baseline the data, can identify trends. But really where you're going to get that, the most bang for your buck is when you start putting all of the pieces together. And, and that's how I would recommend looking at these.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate all of the work that you've put into this effort. And so I'm pretty sure council will, will have lots of questions. Deputy City Manager Eubank, should we make sure we funnel those questions through you?
You can send them to me.
Okay, we'll do. All right, councilmember DeBala.
Yeah, just, just to reiterate, are you looking for, you're looking for feedback on specific measures? No, you're looking for feedback on the system.
If, if, if the council has feedback on specific measures, please give it to us. Because this is very much in draft form. And if you feel strongly that these measures aren't hitting the mark, we want, we want to know. There may be, there may be good reasons that, like we've mentioned before, hey, maybe there's no data, but the system's coming and it can be a year or two. But we will annotate that so that as these are iterated on, we know which ones are priorities. So yes, we are absolutely looking for content feedback in addition to methodology feedback. So thank you very much.
And any recommendations that you have for metrics will be taken through the same evaluation process that every other metric has been taken through.
That'd be great.
So if it, if it comes out that, as Michael suggested, that the data is not available, then that will be highlighted in the appendix.
Yeah. Can you send information about the examples you used in, rather than take time now? Specifically, you looked at half a dozen different communities, but only one of them was small, which was Emeryville. And I'd be just curious to know a little bit more about what they have or don't have, as the case may be.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so I'm going to provide council with a quick, is a five-minute break okay? We'll give everybody a quick five-minute break. We will reconvene at nine sixteen.
She's a vice chair of the Board for Housing Alexandria and an advisory board member for the University of Pittsburgh's Master of Quantitative Economics Program. She has degrees from Boston College, a master's degree from the University of Pittsburgh, and her doctoral degree in agricultural food and resource economics from Michigan State University. So I'm delighted to welcome her here today.
Thank you, thank you all for having me. It's always funny to end on that, my PhD is in agricultural economics. People are like, why do you do urban economics? Long story, but I assure you that I've mostly worked on urban, urban topics. Um, so I, first of all, I have to say it's great to see a city so interested in data from that last presentation, um data and metrics and tracking, so I love that. Kudos to you all. Um, so I'm gonna try to keep this brief because I know it's late. Um, but I'm gonna talk to you today about some work we've been doing um both nationally, um analyzing the impacts of rent stabilization, and then also some kind of local work. We did the background data work for Prince George's Counties, recent efforts to enact a rent stable, permanent rent stabilization law, um and have done some similar work in other places. So first, just really quickly, I think most people here know what it is, but just to give a little bit of a history, what is rent stabilization? And what are all these various terms that we hear people using for what could be considered under the same umbrella? So rent control and rent stabilization are, loose terms used to cover a spectrum of different rent regulations, right? It started, um, well, there are arguments that rent control started many, many more years before this, but in the US, it was really first implemented during World War Two as a hard ceiling on rents. Uh, gen- this is generally referred to as your traditional rent control, right? So rents can't go above X dollars. It evolved over time into a less stringent and more nuanced regulatory screen scheme, which is generally referred to as rent stabilization. Um, modern rent stabilization generally involves, and we're gonna go through all the details, but a cap on annual rent increases along with a set of accompanying regulations that are meant to kind of account for some of the problems that people saw arising from strict rent control. And we'll go through all of those here. So it's the current state of rent stabilization. But our latest data that we have nation, nationwide is as of twenty twenty-two. But um as of that year, over, there were over two hundred local governments that had rent stabilization policies in place. I assume there are more now because there have been more that have established them, but also there are some that get rid of them here and there. Um, seven states in the District of Columbia have localities in which some form of residential rent stabilization is in effect. One state has statewide rent stabilization. One state has statewide rent stabilization but preempts it locally. And thirty-three states preempt it, meaning that you cannot have it. So there is a, there's a plethora of research on rent stabilization. And it tends to be, there, you can pretty much find a study that will tell you whatever you wanted to say about rent stabilization, right? And I think part of the reason for that is because rental stabilization from one place to another can be designed wildly differently, right? It's not the same policy in Minneapolis as it is in St. Paul, even right next door. Well, St. Paul just got rid of theirs. But um, you know, it, it looks very different from place to place. And it also can have different impacts depending on what that place is like, right? Depending on how tight the market is, depending on, you know, all sorts of other factors that can pile up to either make development difficult or easy, or rents increasing at a quick rate or not, right? So a lot of the previous research had been looking at one city at a time, looking at rent stabilization one city at a time. Um, and so I'll talk a little bit about that here, but sometimes when you see different findings, it's because it's a different regime in a different place, right? But generally, if you're gonna try to summarize the research on rent stabilization, it's almost always found to decrease rents for tenants in controlled units, right? As it's designed to do. Um, in cities throughout the country, New York City, San Francisco, Berkeley, LA, et cetera, empirical studies have shown that rent stabilization lowers rents and decreases housing turnover for tenants in controlled units. Um, some studies have also found that rent stabilization may protect controlled tenants from displacement and gentrifying neighborhoods. And it may also improve economic mobility for tenants and generate small benefits for some children that grow up in rent stabilized units. However, there are also a number of studies that show that these benefits to controlled tenants can be potentially offset by negative effects in the uncontrolled market. Meaning those tenants who aren't lucky enough to live in a controlled unit may actually be harmed, depending on how it's designed. So some studies find that the implementation of rent control, rent regulation, decreases the existing rental supply, often through condo conversions. So people who convert rental units to condos and/or reductions in new construction through um some of the newer policies where we're seeing, you know, new construction being subject to rent control. A lot of the older policies completely exempt new construction from rent control. We're seeing more of like rolling exemptions now. Um, there are some other studies that find no significant effect or mixed effects on the quantity of rental housing stock or construction from rent control. So these findings have been mixed across cities in place and time. Um, but like I mentioned, rent stabilization regulations vary greatly in their design. So we just conducted a study, part of the reason that no one had done a study looking at, you know, across all different types of rent stabilization regimes, what are the impacts, was because there was no good data set, right? On rent control across place, place and time. So you could look at, use econometric techniques to try to identify causal impacts of rent control. So we used machine learning to collect data from newspaper articles from across the country and back over time to conduct a study of the impact of rent stabilization. On average, across all the places that have reformed it during our time period, to see what impact um we, it, it has, right? And we wanted to importantly, not just look at overall supply, like a lot of studies have done, but look at the prices of rental units, right? Because, you know, and actually what we ended up finding was what we kind of thought might happen was that we did find that on average, the rent stabilization reforms in our analysis did reduce the overall supply of housing by, rental housing, sorry, by about ten percent. However, we also found that it increased the number of units affordable to extremely low-income households, which is interesting because that's a very hard segment of the population for cities to create housing for, right? So that was, the, we expected there to be some benefits to lower-income household, to units available to low-income, but not to thirty percent and below. That's really, really hard to create, right? So I think, you know, this really points to the trade-offs inherent in rent stabilization um that leaders often have to debate and think about. So like I mentioned, I, from the research, we can see that rent stabilization's impact really depends on how it's designed and how it's implemented, which is something that I think when localities are considering rent stabilization, you all, I'm sure, know this very well, it can be very expensive to, to, um, to actually conduct and oversee and, and ensure that it's being enforced. Um, so the, the major kind of components of a rent stabilization policy include the permitted rent increases, how much rent is allowed to increase, um, and the types of housing covered. So what types of units are or not rent-controlled or rent-stabilized. Unit decontrol, so whether or not a unit becomes deregulated when a tenant moves out and a new one moves in. Meaning that uh in most places, when a tenant moves out, the landlord can pop the rent up to market rate. Um, and that creates all sorts of misincentives, as you can imagine, for landlords to kind of push out tenants, um so they can pull someone new in. And we've actually talked to landlords anonymously through interviews who have said, yeah, no, I don't take families with kids. I try to take like students, college students and those kinds of people because I know they're gonna move out more quickly. So that can create some uh misaligned incentives. Um, exceptions, so a kind of what uh, what circumstances are there? Are landlords allowed to get exempted or exceptions from, from rent control increases? Limit, limits, so capital improvements, things like that pass through to ensure that quality doesn't deteriorate over time. And then tenant protections, so um many places uh enact tenant protections either within their rent stabilization policy or alongside it. Um, things like uh just cause eviction to ensure that landlords aren't pushing tenants out. Okay, feel free to jump into it anytime, by the way. Sorry, I know I'm skimming through this really quickly, but um. So permitted rent increases, I won't go into too much detail, but they often include a baseline factor, usually CPI, plus some sort of escalator, that we call it, so like plus three percent. Um, and they often have a cap to ensure that this doesn't go too high in years where like inflation is very high, as we've seen in the past couple of years. So um, so for example, Montgomery Counties and Prince George's Counties, um, permitted rent increases CPI plus three percent, not to exceed six percent. Um, types of housing covered, this can include kind of building age. So in some places like DC, say, anything built before nineteen seventy-five that fits within the size limit is gonna be rent stabilized. Or it can be based on a rolling age, saying that, okay, you can come build in our city and you will be exempt from rent stabilization for fifteen, twenty years, something like that. But then at that point, you will, um, your units will be stabilized. Um, uh, most localities exempt units with affordability covenants. Um, i.e., you know, li-tech and other units. Many jurisdictions exempt small properties, such as those with four or fewer units. Many jurisdictions exempt small properties, such as those with four or fewer units. We know Tacoma Park exempts only single-family homes, ADUs, and duplexes where one of the units is occupied by the owner. And then size of the owners. A lot of places have realized, oh, there can be a giant landlord that has a ton of properties, but they're all small, and then suddenly he's exempt, sorry, they are exempt from, from rent stabilization. So some places have been switching to the size of the owner's portfolio rather than the size of the building, saying, you know, if you have, if the owner owns less than four units or whatever it might be, then they can be exempt from rent stabilization. There are also often exemptions, fair returns because of the taking clause, takings clause of the Fifth Amendment, you have to, landlords cannot, they have to have a fair return allowable, meaning that if they do not feel like they're making a fair return on their housing, they can apply for an exception. And then there is some research suggesting that some rent stabilization policies can lead to the deterioration of housing, which can lead to health and other negative impacts. And so most places have some sort of significant capital improvement or renovation pass-through, such that when a landlord or an owner makes a significant improvement, they can pass through some of that to the tenant. And it's important to write these carefully, right? So that you're not just making some sort of loophole whereby a landlord can just, you know, slightly improve something just for the sake of bumping up the rent. And so, again, I think the, the story with all of this is balance, creating balance in the rules. Unit de-control, I mentioned, this is a big topic. And interesting that Tacoma Park is one of the few places in the nation that pretty much has unit control, meaning that when a tenant moves out, the landlord keeps, they cannot pop the rent up at all. There is a stipulation that it can, the landlord can pop the rent up by whatever rents in the past were not increased. So if I was allowed to increase by 3% last year and I only increased by 2% and my tenant moves out this year, I can use that banked 1% and increase by more than the allowable increase. But generally, when a tenant moves out, there's not kind of an increase above the allowable increase that the landlord is about to. And, you know, you will hear some pretty solid arguments from landlords that it costs a lot to turn over a unit, you know? You often, especially if a tenant's been there for a long time, it can cost a lot to turn over a unit. So this can be tough for landlords, but so just, but then full de-control, like we said, incentivizes landlords to displace tenants. Rent banking, like I mentioned, Tacoma Park has, when a tenant moves out, the landlord's allowed to bank the rent and move it up. Some places allow that when, like in the, amongst the same tenant. So say I have a tenant, they haven't moved out, and last year I only raised the rent 2%, but I was allowed to do 3%. This year I can do it 4% because it was the allowable increase plus the banked. And some places have found that this can kind of improve housing stability by encouraging landlords to, well, one, it can help landlords bank up for when there are big jumps in operating costs, but, and it can allow landlords to kind of keep rents lower when they have a really good tenant, right? If I'm not gonna be able to bank that and use it later, I'm gonna maximize my rent increase. Because it matters not just for this year, but every year in the future, right? If I'm allowed to bank it, then it might increase the likelihood that I won't even increase by the maximum, right? So, but the cons can be that I could bank a bunch and then there could be a big jump for a tenant from one year to the next. And then like I had already mentioned, tenant protection. Most places try to enact some companion tenant protections if they're not already in place to try to minimize any potential negative incentives created by rent stabilization, such as eviction. Common, common tenant protections, including anti-retaliation and harassment clauses, just cause eviction ordinances, and right to appeal exceptions and exemptions. And then this is the big one, right? So, you know, a rent stabilization law isn't gonna do much if you're not enforcing it, right? And we, I think there was a Washington Post article about landlords in DC talking about how like, oh, you don't have to follow that. No one's, no one's enforcing it. I don't know if that's true. That was in the newspaper. But, but we always say, you know, enforcement, it's a spectrum, right? And it can vary from completely tenant-based, where the tenant has to go out and try to figure out their rights. They might not even know that they're in a rent stabilized unit, right? And then go and file a complaint. They might, if they're a vulnerable tenant, they might be afraid of filing a complaint for fear of landlord retaliation. And they might not even know their rights in the first place, right? And that, that can span all the way from that kind of tenant complaint-based system all the way to a very proactively enforced system where a city will have like a rental registry, they'll track rents, they will be monitoring, they will be doing all sorts of enforcement to ensure that rent control, not only that the landlord and the tenants both know what is allowed, but that they're actually proactively enforcing it and not waiting for a tenant to complain. It can be very expensive to do that. So we often tell localities to consider, you know, the opportunity cost. You know, there's, I think it's Berkeley, California, that has like 15 full-time employees just to administer their rent stabilization program. And at some point, you have to ask yourself, could those dollars, what if those dollars were spent on emergency rental assistance or cash transfers? Or, you know, thinking about the opportunity cost of how much it costs to enforce it and kind of balancing out that proactive enforcement versus complaint-based, I think is, is a challenge that a lot of localities face, especially in times of tightened budgets. Okay, so rent stabilization in the DC region, I'm just gonna quickly kind of go over the comparison of jurisdictions in this region. I live in Virginia, as I was mentioning, since I'm on Housing Alexandria's board. But, and we're not allowed to have rent control in Virginia. I will note that the COG is trying to, trying to do a study in Northern Virginia about what rent control might look like there and then bring that to the state, because there has been some discussion at the state about that. But as of now, you won't see any Virginia cities on here. But Montgomery County, you know, their recent enactment of rent stabilization, a permanent rent stabilization law, there's, like I mentioned, their permitted rent increase is CPI plus 3% with a cap of 6%. Same as Prince George's County. Their exemptions, and this is one of the hotly debated topics when, when localities are, are designing rent stabilization laws, is this new construction exemption. They ended with a 23-year new construction exemption. Not sure how that number was selected, but, so new construction has 23 years before they will be rent stabilized. Accessory apartments are exempted, duplexes with an owner occupancy requirement are exempted, people, people with two or fewer rental units. So again, that's, that's based on the people rather than the building size. And then any unit subject to unaffordability, so li-tech and other, other units that are already subsidized. For unit de-control, they do not have full vacancy. They have vacancy de, no, they have vacancy de-control, but they allow banking of rent increases up to 10% and they can be applied to new leases. So that's kind of their form of like a partial de-control. Their exceptions include fair returns, significant capital improvements, and substantial renovations. For tenant protections, they have an anti-harassment clause that is part of it. Prince George's County, same on the permitted rent increase. Their exemptions are buildings built after 1999. Duplexes, oh, you know what? Sorry, this is the old one. I should have, this, yeah, this needs to be updated with their, their newest one. So I'm just gonna skip over that. It's pretty close to the exemptions in Montgomery County. Unit de-control, again, banking of rent, and then exceptions, fair returns, significant capital improvements, and substantial renovations. They also have anti-harassment clauses for their tenant protections. DC's is actually CPIW, it's just a slightly different CPI index, so inflation index, plus 2%. Their exemptions include newly construction units under five years old, so they have a five-year rolling exemption. People with four or fewer rental units are exempt. Units built under, after 1975, so it's some sort of combo of that. So between 1975 and when this latest five-year rolling construction happened, we're exempt. And then federally or districtally subsidized affordable housing. They also have partial vacancy de-control, so a lot of places have kind of played around with trying to figure out if there's some sort of happy medium between full de-control, where you can pop up the rent fully, to maybe the allowable rent increase plus 3% or whatever it might be. There, there's been all sorts of variations on a partial de-control. And then their exceptions are similar to the other places. They have right to appeal tenant protections. So you all, interestingly, as I mentioned, Tacoma Park has one of the most restrictive permitted rent increases in the country, which is just inflation, so CPIU. Your exemptions include single-family houses, accessory apartments, duplexes with one unit owner occupied, units occupied by tenants with tenant-based rental assistance, and rental developments where at least half of the units are income restricted. You all have some, what I would call a form of partial vacancy de-control, which is the rent banking at vacancy. But beyond that, there is no vacancy de-control, so no allowable increase beyond that CPIU when a new tenant moves, moves in and one moves out.
Say that again?
So when a tenant moves out and a new tenant moves in, the landlord still has to stick to the CPIU. They can only increase rent by the, so it can be tough, right?
Oh, so you call that partial de-control?
I call it partial de-control. It's really full control with rent banking at, at the time of tenant move out. So the landlord can bank up, bank up. I mean, I would say it's probably hard to bank up when the permitted increase is so restrictive. It's probably tough to increase it below CPI. But, because it's, I would imagine it's hard to keep up with costs and the like. But, yeah, but then when a tenant moves out, if you do have anything banked up, you can use that to cover the costs of turning over a unit. But, and I always like to talk to my, my colleagues in the affordable housing realm whenever trying to get assessments of, you know, does this, does this seem tough? How much, how much does it really cost when you turn over a unit? And they would also agree that like it can be very expensive to turn over a unit. So that can, I think, put some strain on landlords.
Could I just ask, make sure I understood that? So if, if I have a, a tenant who's been really great and I've, I've given them less than CPI increases and I've kept track of that, then I can invest that money in the period when I'm preparing it for the next tenant? I can't, I can't up the rent on the next tenant accordingly?
No, you can. You can up the rent on the tenant, next tenant to the...
As if, as if I had always been charging the CPI increase over those years of the tenant who I was cutting the break to.
Yes, 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 exactly. Right. So it does, you know, allow that incentive to, to increase at a, at a lower rate. Your exceptions include fair returns, and then tenant protections include right to appeal and anti-harassment clauses. I know the issue of whether or not you're allowed to have anti, or just cause eviction in Maryland is a tricky one, that is confusing, because it seems like Baltimore has it, but everyone else thinks you're not allowed to, right? So that's a tough one. But I would say, you know, since you don't have that full vacancy de-control, that's not as big of a concern, right? I think landlords are strongly incentivized to keep tenants because it's gonna cost more to turn them over. So that doesn't worry quite as much. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, could I just ask you to pause here? Could you just comment quickly on the, on the difference here in the exceptions? That Tacoma Park does not have significant capital improvements and substantial renovations as part of our... Or is that a question for later? Or we can hold it till later. I don't wanna derail it.
No, it's a, it's a good question. So the way the city does its exceptions is bundled up into the fair return petition. Previously, we've had a couple of different ways to do it over the years. We once had a hardship petition that was kind of the fair return petition, and then a capital improvement petition separately. And then in, I believe it was 2007, we brought it all together as one fair return petition. So when you go in, you have to not only talk about your capital improvements, you also have to talk about your operating expenses, past three years of income, revenue, that sort of stuff.
Any other questions?
Hold on a second, let me just make sure. I'm checking our time. Give me one minute. Councilmember Landman?
In your analysis, initially you mentioned how one of the downsides of rent stabilization can be a temptation to convert to condos. And, and you mentioned that our current rent stabilization program does not apply to one unit owner occupied duplexes, but anything more than that or an accessory dwelling unit, it does apply. Is the conversion temptation greater for those small, say, for example, three or four unit buildings than it is for larger buildings? Is that something where if we have a lot of smaller buildings with, like, say, one owner occupied unit, but there's, there are quadplexes, are those the ones that are more at risk of condo conversion than larger buildings maybe owned by bigger landlords? Or is that just...
Ah, I, I think they would be potentially equally. It probably just depends on which one would be more financially viable as a condo. So the larger apartment complexes, if they converted to condos, they would be completely exempt from rent control, right? Because they're owner occupied. So, I mean, that's a good question. I don't know whether there's greater incentive for smaller units to be converted to homeownership units than, than larger ones. But, yeah, I could look into the research for that. But I think, you know, just on that note, though, there are a lot of localities that enact condo conversion limitations in order to, limits. So they'll either say only X number of units are allowed to be converted to condo, to a condominium in a certain year. Once you hit that limit, no one else is allowed to. Or they might have other sorts of rules about you're allowed to only under XYZ circumstances. So there can be condo conversion limitations. I mean, because in Tacoma Park, new construction is subject to rent control, it would be not just condo conversions, but new construction. You might worry about being reduced because of rent control. So that is, again, it's like those, those tough trade-offs that leaders might have to make. I mean, I think there's always opportunity to create other ways to make new development more affordable if you want to offset those potential negative impacts from rent stabilization, other sorts of upzonings, fee reductions, streamlining of permitting processes, all the things that, you know, make it costly to build in our nation right now. If you wanted to try to offset some of the, the potential negative impact from it. And I'm not saying that we know for certain. I haven't seen a causal study showing any impact with Tacoma Park's rent stabilization in particular on housing supply, but from other research, it might suggest that there should be some dampening effect on new supply. But you can offset that with other policies as well.
And, and, well, I, I would, I would say, and just to kind of chime in a little bit, in terms of Councilmember Landman's question, I mean, we have seen for some of our smaller quads, we have seen that when they are sold, there are some individuals that may choose to get rid of, turn it into a single-family home, right? So it's the size of a very large, single-family home. But because when the property sells, people may choose to not, to basically just convert it instead of having it enter back into the rental, rental rolls. And, and I will say, you know, first, thank you so much. This is really helpful. I, I really appreciate this cross-comparison because, you know, Tacoma Park is this island where we are bordered by Montgomery County on one side and Prince George's County on the other. And so to, to kind of, and DC on the other little, little nugget of a corner. And so to see how our policies are surrounded by other policies that are, are different and in some, some, you know, degree more flexible than what we have, it's important for us to at least acknowledge, recognizing that we haven't had any new construction in the city since the 80s. So I, I do think that it's, it's really helpful to have this conversation. One of the things that I know you just talked about a little bit was how, you know, all of this is about trade-offs. There are positive externalities, negative externalities, and kind of like what are we doing to mitigate them? And so part of what we have been doing as a city, we, we just went through a process of substantial rezoning, which included some increased density, again, with the hope of, of trying to get more opportunities for housing creation. We also are working on finalizing some payment in lieu of tax credit programs to try to incentivize housing renovation and housing development. But one of the things that we are still struggling with is the idea of, candidly, the fact that everyone around us has these long exemption periods for new construction, and we don't. And, and so I wonder, because it looks like for Washington DC, it seems like the exemption is newly constructed under five years old? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think I need to redo that. I think I had done that wrong. But originally, it was any units built after 1975 were exempt. And, yeah, new, new construction under five years old is now exempt. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's a five-year rolling exemption. That's the most recent. And there, there's like a gap in the middle there of like things that are...
Okay, so newly constructed, under five years old is exempt.
And you raise a good point that, you know, if an entire region, say, had a exemption for, oh, you know, did not exempt new construction, it probably wouldn't be a big deal, right? But in a case where a developer can choose to just go next door and build, you know, it can make it hard when the, the policies are so different from place to place nearby.
And so one of the, the other points that you brought up in your, your presentation that, um, I've been grappling with as well, um, is trying to make a distinction, um, in terms of the, the number of units that an individual may own, right? And so, um, for us, it's, it's really accessories duplexes and one has to be owner occupied. And, and so what I've been hearing from some landlords is that it's, it's very challenging for those that maybe have some, we have a lot of quads. And maybe they live in one of the, one of the units and then maybe they have two, two other, three other units. Um, are you aware of any rationale? Because it seems like each community is a little different, like rationale for why they may exempt owners of a certain number of, of units?
Yeah, it's really interesting, you know, there are debates out there about this. Um, some people argue, I think it comes down to like this idea that small mom and pop landlords are inherently going to treat their tenants better. And so that's why smaller landlords are often exempt. However, there's not really a ton of evidence about that. There is some. There is some evidence to suggest that small mom and pop landlords are less likely to evict people. This is just in the general housing sense, not related to rent stabilization. But there are also plenty of small mom and pop landlords that, you know, people would argue are more like, um, I'm blanking on the word. But, but kind of like a, a little kingdom where they, they make their own rules, like you can't cook fish after X hour or whatever, you know what I mean? So there are plenty of small mom and pop landlords that, you know, like we talk about how, you know, you have to get like all these licenses to, to be a nail technician, but you don't get, have to have any license to be a landlord. And so there are many people out there who are landlords who don't.
We're going to be talking about that later today.
So I mean, I think, you know, there are debates about that. I don't feel like that there's solid research. There's some research showing the different behaviors of smaller versus larger, like investor, um, landlords, institutional investor type landlords. But it's really a debate about, you know, do you want to, I mean, you also have to think about, as an economist, I always think about like, what incentives are you creating? Are you creating incentive to have a lot of smaller, like, units, like in duplexes and single family homes? And disincentivizing anything above that because it'd be rent stabilized. Um, so just thinking about where those cut points are and how they might affect behavior and developer behavior. Uh, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer, sorry. But I mean, it's, it's something to consider, you know? Um, and then it, it's also if you do switch from the building size exemption to the number of units that someone owns in their portfolio exemption. It's also really hard to measure, right? Because a lot of landlords have like fifteen different like pseudonyms for their, and, and honestly, it's hard to track that. You maybe can track like how many units a landlord owns within a county, but outside of that, it's, it's hard. There's not really great databases on that. So that can be tough as well. Um, but it does seem like it makes a bit more sense so that you don't have institutional investors coming in and buying up all the single family homes, you know, kind of thing. Um, yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Hozak.
I just want to follow up on that, um, getting to the smaller landlord category. Have you ever seen any studies looking at the, the quali, the quality of life of the, of those, uh, smaller units where the landlord lives in one of the units versus just owning them? To me, to me, that's a really interesting breaking point, partially because I see it a lot around our city. And I, I do notice a general, I, it's anecdotal, but I notice a general improved quality of life for those who live in the same buildings with their, um, tenants. And I'm just curious if there, if you've ever seen studies about that.
I have not seen anything, but this is great. You're giving me research ideas. I will say that, that I want to study that certainly. I will say that owner occupancy requirements, whether they're related to rent stabilization or we deal with them a lot when we're, I do a lot of work on accessory dwelling unit regulations, that they tend to be really hard to enforce and really tough for, for people who are like, say, military who have to move a lot. You know, it's hard to put those types of owner occupancy requirements onto a like, um, so I guess this is more in the case of like an A, an ADU, accessory dwelling unit where you have to put it, you have to make that requirement into the, the home into the future. It's like, pretty much means if like somebody in the military lives there and they have to move, then they have to sell their home because they can't, you know, they can't rent it out and everything. And so in our experience, like, you, you know, I don't, I don't know how else you might kind of incentivize that landlord living there if the research did show that they were better, um, landlords when they're living there. I, I think it's, you just have to be careful when thinking about owner occupancy requirements. Um, because like I said, if, if they're hard, almost impossible to enforce and, um, then like you might get the harms of requiring that without any of the benefits, you know, so.
Okay. Councilmember Schlegel.
Uh, you mentioned, uh, institutional investor landlords a couple of times. So what research is there about that? I know it's, it's a hot topic in the news, but are there signs that institutional investors are, uh, more driven by stockholders, um, to push the limits on rent? You know, what, what, what are you seeing in your research?
Yes. So that is not my area of expertise, but my colleagues at Urban are, and I can share some of their resources with you after this for sure. They are, they have definitely been studying that. Um, I mean, I think there's, first of all, there's like fifty different definitions out there of what an institutional investor is. So they have some good research out there trying to define it. Uh, and then measuring it, like I said, is really hard because there's no good data. But, um, there is some research showing that institutional investors and just like the writ large financial, financialization of housing could be contributing to our increased housing costs. Again, this is not my area of expertise though. But, um, that those are challenges and there are other policy tools out there that are meant to address that and, and limit that. I don't feel comfortable speaking to that. I'm going to say something wrong about it, but I'm happy to share those resources with you afterwards. And also if you wanted any of my colleagues to come speak to you about that particular topic, maybe I'm sure happy to as well.
And one question, oh, sorry, Councilmember Westlake.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Um, I'm really intrigued by the, the point about on average, you know, rent stabilization reduces the supply by ten percent, but increases the units affordable to extremely low income households. And I wondered if you could speak more to, um, like, I wonder if, for example, because our, um, our rate is much more restrictive than some other places, does that then more correlate to a higher number of extreme, being able to house extremely low? Or is it kind of, I, I, if you could speak to anything else you know about the places where that's the case, that would be really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I can hypothesize about it. Originally in our analysis, you know, it's just an average effect. So we can't say where it's happening. The sample size isn't large enough to like kind of cut it. But I would assume, well, one is probably places that have had it longer, had rent stabilization. Because, you know, we always say rent stabilization is not an affordable housing policy, right? If your housing is not affordable and you enact rent stabilization, it's not going to make it affordable for many, 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 many years, right?
Yeah.
Um, and it depends on decontrol and all those other things. But so I would assume places that have had rent stabilization for a long period of time, like Tacoma Park, and ones that have vacancy control, um, would probably see some of this more deeply affordable, um, impacts, right? See some of that thirty percent below, which again, we were really surprised to find, pleasantly surprised to find. Um, but, uh, there was one other thing I was going to say to that. Um, you know, oh, the other thing I was going to say though is while we can say we see these units, we don't observe who's in them. And that's one of the other critiques of rent stabilization. Because it's not means tested, these could be higher income people living in these units, right? And that might mean that any benefits that they are experiencing, that lower income tenants who aren't lucky enough to be in controlled units are getting harmed. And so that's just another important thing to consider. And moreover, when you have a restriction on overall supply, you can actually see this thing called filtering up where higher income, home, higher income renters are actually living in lower cost units because there aren't enough units at their quality point that they would be willing to live in. So they would move into a higher cost unit if they were available, but there aren't any. So they end up occupying lower cost units. Um, and then those lower cost units can't be occupied by other people. So it's just another thing to consider. Like I think, you know, while it's great that we see that zero to thirty percent, who's in there? We don't know. It could be like somebody making a lot of money, you know? So it's, it's tough to say.
And, and I, I do, my question was kind of not necessarily piggybacking off of that, but kind of thinking through, you know, basic laws of supply and demand, right? You have more increase in housing supply, ideally you would see the cost of housing decrease because there's lots of housing. And so part of the challenge, or at least what I'm hearing a lot, is, you know, is that benefit of, you know, making sure that we're increasing the number of units that are affordable to the most extremely low, which is a benefit of rent stabilization. But that cost of the decrease in the housing supply, what does that mean for the overall cost of housing in the area?
Right. And there are some studies that have shown that there is, from some rent stabilization policies, that there has been a reduction in supply and a commensurate increase in uncontrolled rents. So there has been studies that in some places they have seen increases in those rents. So yeah, it's such a trade off. I'm glad I'm not you all having to make them.
I know, it's hard. Councilmember Landman.
So on the point of, um, what the impact is on other rents, uh, now that we've become aware of places being impacted by sort of the data available to landlords that enables them to essentially price fix without, um, getting in a room, in a smoke filled room like they used to have to do in the bad old days, but just go online and look at what everyone else is charging. How is that affecting what you see with respect to the impacts of rent stabilization and the other problems you've talked about? Is it skewing things, uh, in some way more than it used to be or is it probably too soon to say? I don't know.
Good question. Unfortunately, it's probably too soon to say. And we have a whole other study that's trying to address that. We just got an NSF grant to create a database of real time rents, which hopefully we'll have for you all to use in about four years.
They don't claw back your money before you get it.
I know, depressing, that might happen. Um, but, uh, unfortunately, all the good rental data we have is lagged by four to seven years. Well, we have to use, whenever we're at the city level for a city like Tacoma Park, you have to use five year averaged ACS data. The latest five year averaged ACS data has pre-COVID data in it. So it's quite old. Yeah, it's such a challenge. Um, so we can't observe that right now, but it's a good point that that could be even further exacerbating what we might see if rent increases in uncontrolled units. Um, I don't know that it would be any more than anywhere else. I think, you know, we're seeing that everywhere. Uh, or I would assume that those impacts would be seen, um, kind of across the board in uncontrolled units. Um, so yeah.
Councilmember Dabala.
Yeah, um, while we're on this page with the study, um, is this the first set of, the first cross, first cross-city data set, is this mostly larger communities? What I'm thinking is whether smaller communities, and I put Tacoma Park in that category, is, are there some, is, are there some policy differences because of the size? Um, from, so what, can you speak to that a little?
We couldn't, we couldn't look at, I'm trying to use nerdy terms, so what we would call like heterogeneous effects by size. Um, our sample size wasn't big enough, so we, we can't really speak to that. It, we, because we collected this data from newspaper articles, there's probably going to be some bias against smaller places if they don't have their own newspaper that's covering these topics, right? Um, but generally we chose, we collected data from a specific set of metropolitan statistical areas and that we knew either were allowed to have rent control in our time periods and we weren't trying to collect data on places where rent control was preempted the entire period. Uh, but we were looking at all of the localities within those MSA. So there are certainly some smaller ones in there and we did see some. These are mostly reforms. So some of them are totally new and some of them are complete repeals. Some of them are just made rent control more restrictive, some made it less restrictive. Um, Tacoma Parks wouldn't be in our study because this is a pre-post analysis and the year of the reform was prior to our baseline year of when we could get the newspaper data. Um, but I do, you know, the size of the city is certainly going to have an impact in the size of, or the, the tightness of the rental market. And like we said, all those other things that can either pile up to make development feasible and pencil or not. Um, and so, you know, for instance, I always like to use this quote, um, we were interviewing a landlord in California. He's a landlord and a developer and he'd been doing it for forty years. And he said, forty years ago, when I went in to get a permit at the city office, it took me thirty minutes and about fifty bucks. And it was like two pages of paperwork. Now it's thirty thousand dollars. It takes six months, you know? And so like all those other kinds of things, it depends on how all the things are piling up to make development pencil or not, as to whether it's going to have this impact on new development.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Yeah, I'm curious about, uh, when we're thinking about Tacoma Park and how we live within this broader constellation of communities. And if you're talking about a fairly dense urban area like this, how far out do we need to be thinking in terms of the market shed, as it were, uh, against which other developers or potential renters are, are looking at our housing versus other options? Is it, is it like determined by like travel times or that kind of thing, you know? Obviously like, I'm thinking about like in Vancouver, BC, it wouldn't really matter what the rent is thirty miles west of town because you're simply not going to be able to get here from there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question. I mean, I can tell you, I looked at Tacoma Park when I moved here and I also looked at Alexandria. So I would certainly include all the way. I mean, it's, I think it depends on the region and the place. But I mean, I would assume that many people are considering commute time into central DC. Uh, I guess now again, for a while, not so much. But, um, you know, it probably, and that's again too, it also fluctuates with time as well and like the age of your population, that kind of thing. Um, but we generally tend to use either commute times from the census or commuting zones. There are commuting zone CZ data, um, I think USDA puts that out. So you could look at those, those sorts of data. Um, we like to look at access to jobs within, um, the typical median commuting time in a region as like a typical commuting zone. So say the typical commuting time is thirty minutes, then you can create a radius of how many, so like when we're measuring, say, access to opportunity, um, how many jobs are accessible within a thirty minute radius, those kinds of things. So there are all sorts of different ways of doing it, but I think it's going to vary based on the region. I think in DC, people are used to commuting quite far, unfortunately. Um, but yeah, it's a great, yeah, it's probably.
That's really helpful.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilbert.
Um, this, this question, I think maybe is for you, Devin. Maybe it's a good time maybe to clarify. Um, for the building that we, um, provided the, the loan to, um, which is the building I live in, they received an exemption, um, after the purchase. And I was just wondering which one of these exemptions would, would, um, classify for why they received their exemption?
Yeah, correct. So the exemption that they're operating under is the, uh, restriction with a, another government agency. So that's the fifty percent of, at least fifty percent of the units are governed by an affordability agreement with a government agency, in this case Montgomery County.
Okay.
And, and I just want to confirm, so just so that I'm clear, so, so that is, that's not under fair return? That's not related to rent, uh, rent stabilization laws? Is it related to rent stabilization laws? It is?
Correct. Yeah. So, so the way it works is, and this is typical of other jurisdictions. Um, if you are an affordable housing development, that means you have an, an agreed upon affordability agreement that sets rents usually earmarked to certain income levels. You are exempt from rent stabilization under the current law as it stands.
Okay.
And I think that's that last bullet here, that rental developments where at least half of the units are income restricted. And that can actually be, let many places see that kind of exception as a good way of encouraging mixed income development, helping to fight against the segregation patterns that our nation so often, you know, um, have in, in communities. So I think you, you do see that not just in rent control, but in other types of rules like Massachusetts forty B requires a certain amount of affordable housing in each jurisdiction, but they include units and mixed income units that have a certain number that are affordable. So you see all sorts of different tools that localities are using to try to incentivize mixed income housing as well.
Councilmember Landman, last question.
Thank you. This is a follow up possibly for you, Mr. McNally. I'm not sure. But so we have some buildings that have these covenants when they were built and they're forty years old or more. And then the covenants expire and then we have been engaging in pilot programs that extend their agreement to maintain affordable units in exchange for a tax break. I think I'm describing that accurately, uh, the pilot programs. Would those be considered rent controlled or rent stabilized units? Or do they fall into some other category where the effect is the same as rent stabilization, but the mechanism is different?
So generally speaking, when. So generally speaking, when, so from, let's say, year one of an affordable, new affordable housing complex is built, they have an affordability agreement with the government agency. Generally speaking, when those are going through renovations to extend the life, they are going back to the government agency and saying, we are interested in more government financing, either through tax credit sale or direct, you know, loans, grants, whatever the funding source may be, and we are renewing our affordability agreement for whatever amount of time afterwards. In the tax credit, our Affordable Housing Preservation Tax Credit, we tie directly to those subsidy sources. So they have to show us, same way with rent stabilization, the regulatory agreement that they have with the government agency that lays out the number of units at what income levels before they can get the tax credit. And that is the same way that we do it for the rent stabilization as well.
But the rent stabilization units also have an income, they don't have an income restriction for the tenants, but these would, is that the difference?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's the difference.
May I ask that, just out of curiosity, when, when a unit becomes, like ages out of their affordability requirements, does it then become rent stabilized?
Correct.
Okay.
Dr. Stacy, could you come back to the comparison of the local jurisdictions for just a second? I did a quick Google search, and I think the correction to Washington, DC might be under five units rather than five.
Ah, okay, yeah, that's what, that didn't make much sense. There, thank you.
Huge difference.
That is a huge difference, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so it's 1975, okay. So anything built after 1975. So they do not have any rolling. It's confusing because some places have multiple, New York City has like three different forms of rent control in their city. DC is similar. Thank you for fixing that.
Great. All right. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Stacy, for coming out. I think this has been a really helpful conversation for us as we are embarking on a review of our policies. And it's always helpful to make sure that we're considering the region at large when we're making adjustments. Thank you so much. All right. So now we are entering into our work session. The first item is ordinance amending Title VI Housing regarding the issuance of rental licenses.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Once again, Devin McNally, HCD Director. We have a...
And Mayor, while we have a minute, can I move up? And I apologize to Director McNally, and again, congratulate you. My question was directed to Director McNally and not Devin, sorry.
So we have before you today a code amendment altering Title VI, which relates to housing. And this is related specifically to our rental licensing and the issuance of rental licenses. So with us today is Jessica Troop, our Housing Program Specialist, to walk us through the ordinance and the changes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Devin said, my name is Jessica Troop. I am the Housing Program Specialist for the Housing Department. And as part of my role, I do manage the rental licensing program. So I'll be presenting our rental licensing code amendments. So there are two amendments to the rental licensing code that we're proposing. The first of these is a change in the rental license expiration dates from a set date to them expiring on a rolling basis. The second is the allowance for the department to issue temporary rental licenses under limited conditions. So a little bit of background on the rental licensing program. As you all know, to legally rent a property in the city, you need to have a valid rental license. Part of that rental licensing process is that the property needs to pass a Montgomery County property inspection. So the expiration dates of rental licenses are determined by the number of code violations found in that initial inspection. So a property where there are five or fewer minor code violations found in that inspection, they'll be issued a biannual rental license. If they're over five code violations, they're issued an annual rental license. And then to make sure that those properties remain up to code, they're regularly re-inspected in order to maintain a rental license. So we consider an inspection current if it has been either one or for either one or two years from the date that it passed inspection. And that's based on those same number of code violations. So a property where five or fewer minor violations were found in that initial inspection, that inspection is considered current for two years from the date that the property passed inspection. If there are more than five violations found, that inspection is considered current for one year from the date that it passed inspection. And then a rental license isn't able to be renewed unless the property has a current past inspection. So if their inspection is in process, they've not passed their inspection yet, they will not get a rental license until they pass that inspection. So under our current code, all licenses expire on December 31st. An annual license expires December 31st of the year that it's issued, and then a biannual license will expire December 31st of the following year. So the change that we're proposing is for the expiration dates of those licenses to be based on the date that they were issued. So an annual license would then expire a year from the date it was issued. A biannual license would expire two years from the date that it was issued. There are a few different benefits of why we would have rolling expiration dates. Part of that is staff capacity. So under our current system, we have about 380 rental licenses that are all renewed in the month of December. So being able to distribute those throughout the year gives us more time to be able to work with landlords during that renewal process, help them through any questions or any issues that they're having completing that renewal. The big incentive, the big benefit here is that it would incentivize owners to correct their code violations more quickly in order to get their rental license because we're aligning the license expiration dates with their inspections, rather than having all the, all of the licenses expire at the end of the year. This creates this incentive for owners to be more proactive in addressing those issues because if the property is unlicensed, one of those reasons is that they can, they can't evict tenants. If a property does not have a current rental license, they're unable to evict a tenant. But this also would mean that we are able to cite a property for renting on an expired license. So this gives us another avenue to hold landlords accountable for meeting that property maintenance code. And then, of course, there is the obvious benefit to tenants, that their landlords are incentivized to maintain their property and correct any issues more quickly. Moving on to our second proposed amendment, which is about temporary rental licenses. So under current city code, we do not have a temporary rental license, which means that a property needs to meet all of its licensing requirements in order to receive their annual or biannual license. The change that we're proposing would be to allow us to issue a 90-day temporary rental license, which would be able to be renewed only once for an additional 90 days. And this would be done at the department's discretion, but under very limited circumstances. Those kinds of issues that would lead to this, that would benefit us having a temporary rental license, is that we do run into cases where there are circumstances that prevent an owner from meeting those licensing requirements that are outside of their control. So these can be things like external repairs that are significantly delayed because of bad weather, or property code violations that are outside of the owner's control, that they're not really able to correct. This, what this leads to is an owner who has been proactive about meeting all of their licensing requirements, getting their license renewed on time, renting with an expired license despite making good effort to try to correct the issue. Being able to grant these owners a temporary rental license would allow them to remain in compliance in that period where they're working to correct the issue before they can get their annual or biannual license. And so again, this is something that we would only be issuing in these kinds of very limited circumstances. So that would be done under our discretion specifically for issues that are outside of the owner's control and that they're demonstrating a good faith effort to us that they are working to correct that in a timely manner. That is all that we have prepared for you. I and Director McNally are here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great. Well, you sold me with the 380 at the same time. That, that's...
It's a lot.
That's a lot. Councilmember Dabala. I'm sorry, I, who was first?
I didn't see this direction, but Schlegel.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Just one question is, this makes a lot of sense, and your presentation's great, so thank you. How would, how would the transition period work? And I missed how the incentivizing of landlords would, would be improved. Is it something about how the alignment for the renewal would become, would be closer to when their lease actually expires? And then how would you do the transition? Like, would there be certain, certain land, certain properties that went extra long between inspections during the transition, or would certain properties be burdened because there'd be like an inspection on top of an inspection, like within three months or something?
Yeah. So to address the first piece of that, why there's a greater incentive is, we do have this total disconnect between when a license expires and then the schedule that they're having their inspection. So even though an annual license has an annual inspection, all those annual licenses expire December 31st.
Oh, okay.
Those inspections are happening throughout the year. So if you have your inspection early in the year, an owner who maybe isn't proactive about correcting those issues, at least in terms of their license, they might view that as, oh, we have until December to correct that, as long as I get it fixed before my license needs to be renewed, right? And so having those better aligned, because they won't get their license, even now, they don't get their license if they have not passed an inspection. So tying that expiration date to when they get their license makes that inspection schedule impact the actual expiration date of their license. So if they don't correct those issues quickly, they're not going to get their rental license. And then you run into all those issues where you're renting on an expired license. And in terms of implementing it, if this code change goes through, we would just start following this process of when these licenses would expire based on the date they're issued. It wouldn't impact the inspection schedule. That would keep going the way that it has. It would just be that when those licenses are, when new licenses are issued, their expiration date would be based on the date that it's issued.
Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you so much. This was, this all sounds like it will really help your, your office to support better housing quality, which is definitely something I'm interested in. I have only one question, which is related to staffing capacity. It sounds on one hand like if we were to pass this, it would give you, your office greater control, and you wouldn't find that you'd have a huge influx of things happening in December, which is never ideal, and probably untenable. But I'm also wondering, it also provides more of a personalized approach to each one of your landlords, which is a high bar to meet. And I know that probably a lot of Tacoma Park residents, we would like to see that. On the other hand, it does require a significant amount of staff capacity. For example, if you were to be asked to issue a temporary license for 90 days, and then you need to assess whether or not this particular landlord should or shouldn't get it out of your 380 licenses. Can you just comment on your concerns about that, or how you would propose to address them? Are you already dealing with that, and this isn't going to add an extra layer of work? Okay.
Sorry about that. So we, I would say, at the city, are, offer what I would call a boutique service to both residents and landlords. And we spend a lot of time on the phone in meetings with both tenants and landlords. And so spreading this out in some ways is actually a benefit for staff capacity because it means that when these issues arise, we're not getting 200-plus emails in December, particularly December 31st, about this. And then we're having to untangle it in a very short timeframe. We already have to deal with some of these issues related to kind of issues outside of a landlord's control. And so I wouldn't see this as creating additional workload for the department.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Wesley.
Thanks. I have a question about the temporary ones. It sounds like from the description, this would really only be accessible for current landlords, right? Like, so if they have a current license and it would be expiring, but they need to fix these things, and it's like a temporary Band-Aid to get them to the next side? Or could this be used by a new landlord, the temporary one?
My understanding is that it would primarily be a renewal because these are circumstances
in which there is a good reason that the license hasn't gone through. The department policy is that if you are acting in good faith and moving forward, we don't actively pursue citations. So a new landlord coming on wouldn't be getting a citation in the mail the next day, and they would have plenty of time to come talk to us. If there was a reason why they were unable to move forward, or some, you know, difficulty they were running into, then of course we would consider issuing a temporary license.
Councilmember Schlegel.
My question is kind of a follow-up on that. So supposing someone had been illegally renting a unit, they'd never sought a license, and then you came to them, and you said, what are you doing? Would they be able to say, oh, well, can I get a temporary license while I get smoke detectors and things installed, you know?
No. So that temporary license really is, I think, like you were mentioning, kind of a bridging the gap in getting your full rental license if there is something that's outside of your control. So in a case like that, they just aren't going to pass their property inspection, they need to install their smoke detectors. It's not kind of like a loophole that they could use to get that license faster.
Councilmember Landman.
Are you going to have some kind of prorata license fee for the year when this is all going into adjustment?
So license fees by code are not prorated and non-refundable, and we have no plans to change that because the way that we're going to roll this out is not going to affect, there, no one's going to wind up with a license shorter than 12 months.
Councilmember Hansak.
Just one more thing, and this is not a complete thought, but just this conversation and looking at the language that you currently have here, it makes me think, because it begins with temporary rental housing licenses at the discretion of the department, et cetera, et cetera. You know, one thing that I'm sure you're mindful of, but I'm thinking of on your behalf, is just, we don't want landlords to be taking out their frustrations that, you know, so-and-so's discretion says X, Y, or Z. So I think it's good that you've outlined below that the different rationales for which you would want to consider that. But perhaps it might be considered how you might incorporate some of the points you're just making here about the purpose of the mechanism and making that just a little bit more lucid so that it's clear that this is not necessarily intended for new licensees, and people don't try to bend the rules on you and then accuse you of treating them differently than, than others. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Every time. Councilmember Dabala, did you have? Okay. Every time I'm like, we're done, you're like, I have one more question. All right, not seeing any additional questions. Thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. And just as a reminder for my colleagues, this will be back before us for a vote, I believe, next week. All right. Last item for this evening is discussion of legislative action requests to be submitted to the Maryland Municipal League. And with that, I will turn things over to Councilmember Dabala. Are you gonna take this or Councilmember Landman?
I'm gonna start.
Okay. All right, I'll turn things over to Councilmember, Councilmember Dabala to start and Councilmember Landman, who've both been working to take what we discussed during the work session last week to put pen to paper and do additional follow-up in terms of various legislative actions that are still kind of pending to help us with finalizing a draft of our LARs. So with that, I'll turn things over to Councilmember Dabala.
Yeah, and I'll start and then Councilmember Landman will wrap up. So last week, we discussed a number of areas that we were interested in. We discussed the idea that since MML routinely can be counted upon to do fiscal measures, that maybe we don't need to be among the many voices demanding that they do that. So we focused on other things and we talked about sustainability, particularly the area of climate. We talked about transportation, especially about SHA. We talked about utility regulation and a couple other things. And so where, where we came out, Councilmember Landman and myself, was to come up with some draft words for each of these topics. But before we do that, they are all in flux because the governor hasn't finished signing bills for this year. At least one of the topics on here is, is, the sustainability topic is in flux because there's already talks of overriding one of the vetoes and suing one of the signatures. So until some of this shakes out and we are able to consult with our delegates in the next few days, we don't know for a hundred percent how to word it, let alone if we even really should be pushing it. So that applies to a couple of these topics. That said, on the sustainability arena, we picked out the two areas that have been important to Tacoma Park, if not necessarily to all other municipalities. Two big areas of greenhouse gas emissions, transportation and buildings, looking at funding, continuing to make it possible to install municipal level EV charging, not just funding, but the rules in achieving building efficiency primarily through, primarily through building performance standards. But that, of course, is one of the things that's up, that's still up for wraps from this year. And this second one is a rehash of what we, what we proposed last year concerning the state highway administration. And since the, the lead on this would have, was council, was delegate Charcutian, we need to speak with her about it. Same thing with the third one, seeing if it makes sense to refile a bill on low-income property tax credit eligibility, or if it makes sense to wait a year and see how the Montgomery County slash Tacoma Park pilot works out. If that works out, it's just a stronger argument to make statewide. And, and that's another thing we need to talk to delegate Charcutian about, since again it was heard about.
I wonder whether you should read these out loud because I don't think that the text has been made available to the public because we got this at the very last minute, right? So people may not know what you're alluding to. I just wonder whether if we have people trying to understand what we're alluding to, it might be a gap.
Okay, I was skipping the text because I figured the specific text wasn't so important as the concepts, but I'm happy to read it.
Well, Madam Mayor, it's up to you, but I just, I just realized that we got this, we did not have a chance to put it up on the, on the
Well, that's certainly true.
On the agenda for people to see.
Yep. We can work with the city clerk. Just in the interest of time, given that it's ten forty-one and members of council have received the language and we're nearing the end of discussing the items, we can work with the city clerk to have the draft language posted in the morning.
Okay, so, yeah, so to regroup, there are four items. Climate sustainability, state transportation, low-income tax credits, and utility regulation. I'll turn it to Councilmember Landman to explain the fourth one. And again, these are still in flux, so we'll have to come back next week with language that we can vote on.
Thank you, Councilmember Dabala. We also have to come back and pick three, I think. Three is our top number.
Three, yeah. And compound sentences, I have learned.
Okay. And, and it could be that when we discuss the third one, which is the tax credit eligibility, that our champions may tell us that it's still hopeless and that therefore if we want, if we have to pick three, we may have to decide on the basis of feasibility
Yeah.
As opposed to desirability, even if it's our favorite one. Okay, so the fourth one that I was asked to look at was the utility regulation issue. And so to develop language that would support potentially altering the standard for liability of public utilities like Pepco to cover the costs of property damage as a result of negligence or default in the electric utility services that they provide, because right now the standard is gross negligence, which is extremely difficult to prove, and the city and many of our residents have experienced this problem. So where, where we have great concern about whether we will ever see a penny, and perhaps this is something that we might want to put forward. The second thing that was proposed by us last week was that we include language that would support legislation directing utility owners of utility poles to remove old poles promptly and promptly replace or relocate poles that obstruct public thoroughfares at their expense rather than ours. And the third thing, which I think I might turn back over to Councilmember Dabala if she's willing, was my attempt to reflect language that would incentivize more installation of household solar panels and incentivize the state to open the door to additional such power supply, meaning renewable power supply, by lifting the existing cap on the net metered renewable power, which means the net power that people are putting back into the metering system through their solar installations right now, because there's a cap in there which is really favors the utilities continuing to be the ones who supply the power as opposed to taking it from us. And there are reasons why we would rather have more Maryland-generated power than imported power from other states, especially if it's renewable power. So, but maybe, Madam Mayor, you have some explanation about why that perhaps is something that we'd want to leave off the list and have our utility proposal include only the first two that I mentioned, which is the liability change and the telephone pole change.
Yeah. Councilmember Dabala, did you want to weigh in on this at all?
Yes, so the second and third ones, just to refresh people, there were variations on those in previous, previous legislation, legislative years. And so at least for the third one, again, we need to check with the expert, which happens to be delegate Charcutian. There's also a report that recently came out that talks about how much of the cap is actually been used and how much is still available in different categories, and that might be a factor in whether or not we want to push something in practicality this year that, that may wait, may wait better until next year. But again, this is a strategic conversation with someone who's been on vacation. Yeah, the, Karen.
Councilmember Hanzak.
Thank you so much for putting all of these together. I just wanted to just comment, I think really only on the very last one that's here, about MML possibly supporting legislation to eliminate the two hundred percent cap on net metered household power generation. I mean, I can see the inherent value in that from a Maryland perspective. I, however, I struggle to see how that specifically supports households or even our renewable energy goals here in the city of Tacoma Park. So to me, that one doesn't meet the bar like the others. It's noble, it's what we should be doing as people, but I just don't understand how it directly impacts us, in particular because I, perhaps I'm misinformed, but I, you know, we actually can only generate so much solar power here within our city because of our tree cover, which is just, it's just an inherent situation that we have here. So I just, it's hard for me to see how this one relates. Maybe you could explain further to me if I'm missing something.
Well, I'm not a huge expert. I will say this, the more that you can generate and put back into the grid, the larger the reimbursement that you might get under some of the schemes for power that you're producing.
Sure.
And, and the efficiency of solar panels is, is growing year on year.
Yeah.
So even though we do have a lot of tree cover, it's possible that in the next few years, solar panels that could achieve a great deal of generation, more than you would need for your household, would be able to function even in, you know, in the high shade conditions that many households have. So this one, you know, I, I put this in here at the suggestion of other people, but I went and did a little reading about it. And I think that two hundred percent limit is, is not uncommon in other jurisdictions right now, but it's sort of planning ahead. We have a lot of issues with meeting our own greenhouse gas emission reduction goals.
Yeah.
So it's helpful for that, but, you know, understandably, it's, you know, very incremental. So I'm not gonna fall on my sword over this one.
No, no, I just, I was just curious. Thanks. Thank you.
So there are two outstanding questions. One is that the city manager had mentioned a different possibility in terms of whether it's too early to suggest any changes to the Maryland Police Accountability Act. And there was gonna be a discussion with Senator Smith that as far as I know, hasn't happened yet.
No, he's, he's
Right, because he's, yeah, so that one, just to let everybody know, that one's sort of parked. It's Memorial, it's getting close to Memorial Day, it's the beginning of summer, people are starting to do things and they're not always available. Besides reacting to these, the really threshold question here, so that we can prepare for next week, is whether anybody has any other topics or other specific suggestions. We seem to be losing the audience here. That, that to add to the list to research so that we can vote on this next week. Not whatever, the revisions to these and is there any addition that we want to consider for next week? Another topic. Going once, going twice.
I guess I want to make sure that on the very last item, the two hundred percent cap, just to make sure I understand what that means, just, does that mean that if my house last year, if I don't have solar, my house last year generated eight hundred kilowatts a month, I'm currently allowed to generate, to install panels to get up to sixteen hundred kilowatt hours a month?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would require you to have battery storage, but mine external over has it, and it's definitely doable. And so I just, you know, we had talked last week about housing, but also the fact that, you know, if we were gonna try to push anything at the, you know, push anything would be just cause and kind of where we are with that. And so the, the other point, we took a look and, and, you know, this last legislative session was pretty jam-packed, and so there was quite a bit that went through related to immigration. And, you know, right now, the, the big question is Councilmember Dabala and Landman alluded to, is whether or not a couple of, of items that we pushed for are going to be vetoed. So even for state highway and them working on sidewalks, that's a bill that is currently, there's a possibility for there to be a veto on that. So there may be just requiring us to kind of follow up a little bit more over the next few days with our lobbyists in Annapolis and the like to see if we can get a little bit more information and our respective delegates to see if we can get a little bit more information regarding the status of a couple of things that we were pushing that weren't MML priorities last year, in twenty twenty-four, but maybe something worth pushing, depending on how these bills shake out. Councilmember Hanzak.
Question for city manager's office. Are there any areas of policy that you, your office has noted, are challenges that the city has been facing, underlying some of the changes you would have been seeing in the city that you would like to see changed? And I know this question is coming as a surprise, so if you don't have the answer at this moment, I would understand, but I would welcome the city management office commenting on whether there are any particular issues that you think could really advance the objectives that you've been trying to achieve from the city staff perspective.
We appreciate the question, Councilmember. And at this time, to your point, we don't have anything to offer.
Sure.
But we could certainly, if it's council's interest, provide something between now and next meeting we're at next meeting.
I don't know if I can speak for the council, but I would welcome hearing.
And I do want to, I do want to stress that during the last meeting last week, the city manager did offer up the Police Accountability Act. So, and the, the next step for us was to try to have a conversation with Senator Smith to try to see what the thoughts were about that and whether or not it's, it's too soon for us to be able to definitively say what it is that we want? Or is this something that we want to work on over the course of the summer and push with Senator Smith and when we have our District Twenty meeting in December? So, so that is where we are with that.
Okay. Do we have any?
I don't. I know, we were supposed to have a meeting yet, Council. Councilmember Schlegel.
Just been picking my brain here. Cut-through traffic being such a big issue in our neighborhoods, I do get asked by people what authorities municipalities have to, to limit the mapping of secondary streets and residential streets into navigation apps. And so I wonder whether there might be interested among municipalities in the state passing something along those, those lines to, to say that there, there could be some, some rules, some guidance about how navigation apps and companies use map data and blur out certain streets, I don't know. At this hour, I don't know the type of term for that. You know, I don't know what, what other members might be thinking along those lines. I know we see it in a lot of different sections in town.
Councilmember Hanzak.
If I may just respond, my, my quick knee-jerk reaction to that is I've heard that, that sentiment issued at a lot of places. I can even imagine myself wishing for it on my own street, being a pass-through street. That said, it gives me great trepidation to pass a law like that on state level because of the way it would likely get implemented. NIMBYism would go wild and crazy across the state, and I, I think at the end of the day, the greater good would not be achieved, is my knee-jerk reaction. But anyway, I think it's, it's a sentiment that I know is, is felt by many residents.
Yeah, and I, I get that because it's like public street is public street, and at some point, you don't want every place to become Chevy Chase, you know?
Yeah, one-way streets.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, I was, I was just floating
I don't know, no, it's a real thought.
A thought that I've heard people talk about, but no, no need to say that.
Councilmember Landman.
On the point of traffic, though, last session, there was a bill that came close, which would have enabled us to lower the speed limit by five miles an hour without the passage or without doing a traffic study. And I think that died at the committee level, right? Or it was in the one bill that almost made it through, but it didn't quite. I wonder whether you anticipate that someone else at MML or MML itself will be promoting that or whether we should have that on our top three list.
I was assuming it was gonna be on our list for the county
For the county.
Because that's what was
Right, because that was a county bill.
And the
Okay, and that's not something that has widespread municipal, I mean, I could imagine that the MML And that's not something that has widespread municipal, uh, I mean, I could imagine that the MML has enough members that might welcome that besides us. And, uh, I don't know, it's just a question.
It was a str- it was a strategic, it, it wasn't our decision, it was a strategic decision two years ago that going through the county delegation and taking advantage of the courtesy that other legislators tend to give to bills that a county delegation says they want would be an easier route. And that would have been true, but it did work out the way.
We can, like, we can ask around to a couple of, um, I can ask around to a couple of others.
Yeah, I want you to, you know, to talk to about that.
All right. Seeing, seeing no additional hands, uh, it looks like we have, we're done for the night. All right, thank you all so much for, for joining us. And, uh, just want to say that this meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a great night.